Good evening, everybody. It is 5:00 and we have a city council meeting. I want to thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and look forward to some good conversation over a few things tonight. So with that, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Are we all ready? We're all good, all right. And if you would, please all rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right. Ms. O'Connell, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barelli.
Here.
Councilmember Noel.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Thomas.
I am here. All right, thank you very much. And with that, we roll right into the Veterans Day proclamation. And this is a, I don't know, it's always a special day when we get an opportunity to honor those that have served in our country. And this is absolutely no different. There's been a lot of, a lot of, it affects, I can't tell you, I can't tell you how much it has affected my family over the years in so many different ways, just serving in terms of pride and in terms of the challenges. It runs the whole gamut. And my family throughout the years have served in several different, several different of the armed forces. And do you know the number of veterans that we have working for the city? I know we have it, but I...
Fourteen, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So with that, I'd like to express my appreciation for their service today and all those that have served. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation that I will be reading on Thursday at the Veterans Memorial Celebration at 11:00. The proclamation of the City Council of the City of Placerville commemorating Veterans Day 2021, whereas the United States military is the strongest, most capable fighting force in the world, the world has ever known. The brave men and women of our Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, and Coast Guard demonstrate a resolute spirit and unparalleled commitment to defending our nation and preserving the American way of life we hold so sacred. Whereas we acknowledge that America is both revolutionary and exceptional. We are the only nation founded on ideals where political authority is in the hands of the people, by the people and for the people, and where equality, freedom, justice, liberty are all the quarterstones of our democracy. And these principles make us extraordinary, ensuring that America is the shining light and land of opportunity in the world, any world plagued with oppression. These ideals also make us a target for those who are threatened by the sacred fires of liberty, those liberties that are extolled in the Constitution of these United States. And whereas it is the men and women of the United States Armed Forces, along with their families, that make immeasurable sacrifices on the battlefields and on the home front to defend and protect American ideals so that you and I are able to enjoy the hollowed blessings of this liberty. Now therefore, I Dennis Thomas, Mayor of City of Placerville, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2021 as Veterans Day in the City of Placerville. May we come together as a community and as a grateful nation to recognize and honor our United States veterans who remain the only superpower capable of safeguarding equality and freedom in the world today. Let that sink in. All right. Thank you. And moving on to 3.2, Mayor's Cup Presentation. So this person doesn't even know what's happening today. Matter of fact, I'm glad they showed up. This presentation, this is just a, you know, what I, this presentation is to, I want to recognize the Mayor's Cup 2021 for the positive light you shine on our community. And this is just my little way, kind of take a part in this meeting, to recognize people in the community that stand up, that stand out a little bit, that go the extra mile, that do some things that people just don't do. And this one is for Sue Rodman. I know, right? You have been to our meetings for as long as I can remember.
Our audience.
And it is so deserved because you have, not only do you come to our meetings, you are Major H., Major L., committee, and you have dedicated so much time and energy to ensuring the proper execution of those, of that money. And you work collaboratively with staff, you always have a positive thing to say, and I don't always agree with you. And I, and at the same time, I truly appreciate the thought and consideration you put into everything we do in this city. And the fact that you comment on so many agenda items doesn't bother me one bit because I always know that where you're coming from is from a place of good intention and a place where you, thoughtful intention. So with that, I want to share this with you. I'll be right down there. And if you'd like to say something, please.
Definitely surprised and very grateful. I do love the City of Placerville. I've been here since 1989, refugee from Montana. Came to where below the snow and above the fog and didn't have to shovel snow anymore. And I have been very glad to be a part of this community and very happy to be on the Major H. and Major L. committee. And now I'm on the Fire Safe Council, too. So I do appreciate this community. I think it is a wonderful community and has great people who live here. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I would just like to echo that I really appreciate all the thoughtful contributions you have to our conversations. I've enjoyed working with you on committees, and I worry about you when you don't make a meeting.
I love how your attendance is so reliable that Dennis did not even need to tell you you were going to get this to get you here.
I just can't believe that you read all these agendas that we have. You do a lot of homework that maybe some of us don't completely, but you know, it seems like every word in there. And I just so appreciate you attending all our meetings and being so interested in giving your, like Dennis was saying, maybe sometimes we don't agree with your side of the story or you don't agree with ours, but it's always a very thoughtful and, you know, a back and forth. And we appreciate those kind of folks so much. I just want to thank you.
Yeah, I think the most impressive thing I remember from my time here on city council is just you going over with a fine-tooth comb on the vegetation management and really finding some flaws in it that were, and your suggestions were great to make it a better document as we move forward with that ordinance. So, you know, that just underscored for me everything that the mayor said. So Sue, thank you for all you do for the city.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and move on. And thank you again. So let's, we're going to go on to, let's see, closed session reports. We did not have a closed session, so I'm going to take a wild guess. We have nothing to report out.
Right. That's... We didn't meet in closed session, nothing to report.
There we go. Sorry, kind of stole our thunder. Let's see, if we can get a motion to approve the agenda, that's presented unless you have any changes.
A move for adoption.
All right. Second?
A second.
All right. And roll call, please. Yeah, why not?
Councilmember Barelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Noel.
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
All right, moving on, announcements and presentations to the public. Receive and file Public Safety Power Shut-Off Report from Utility Liaison Mark Acuna. You are up, sir. Another person who has given of himself in so many different ways to this community. Once again, I express my appreciation for your efforts in this area, so. Of course, I didn't turn your mic off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that kind introduction. Mark Acuna, City Placerville Utility Liaison. Pleasure to be here this evening on the, what is actually the third anniversary of the Camp Fire or the Fire That Destroyed Paradise. It's hard to believe that that event happened in November. And so I can remember the shock that went through this community as we watched that happen. And so utilities and fire safety seem to be forever linked. First of all, I would like to thank Cleve and the council and staff again for their ongoing support in my efforts as I work with PG&E to address a number of issues. And Cleve and I had a follow-up, or I should say a transition meeting. You know, we recently went from Sarah Rashid to Brandon Sanders. Brandon is familiar to a lot of you. He's been with PG&E a number of years, lives over in the Auburn area, so he's a foothill resident and understands our situation pretty well. So Cleve and I successfully went over a number of things with him about three weeks ago. And the message was so positive that I really asked Cleve for some time before the end of the year to come back and share with you just quickly some of the things that we, we as a community have been successful. First of all, it's easy to say that unlike other summers, we can now safely say the PSPS season is well behind us. Today's soaking rain pretty well will take care of that threat. So it's hard to believe that in November and past years, it has been a serious issue for this community. Thanksgiving, actually, was the focus of a PSPS just two years ago. So with that, one of the big changes and really significant, really excited about this, Dave Warren and I got a hint about it during an earlier workshop with PG&E, that they had indeed upgraded their weather forecasting model, and they are now using a program called Technosilva. Technosilva apparently is like an industry standard, it's used by the Forest Service. More importantly, it's used by Cal Fire and is very attuned to a lot of the regions that PG&E has concerns over. And you will notice in October, we indeed had a very windy afternoon and evening, and our power did not go out. I don't believe PG&E had any problems that evening. I don't believe the Chief Cordero had any issues that evening with downed power lines either. And that is a direct result of this new program. So I am looking forward to their continuing to use this new program to greatly reduce the PSPS impact in Placerville. It, as I said, there was a hint that we would be pleased with the new tool and certainly is delighted. I can absolutely guarantee you that using the old tool, that we would have had three one-to-two-day outages in late September and October, at least three, probably even a fourth. So huge improvement. Ballpark figure, I believe, for these events, the economic impact to our community is about $500,000 across the area when you figure in all the interruptions. So, you know, huge improvement and hats off to them for making a big step forward in improving their prediction and operations. The other big item that's on your report, and it refers to the CPUC Fire Tier South Main Street. During the summer, I spent my free time figuring out a way to, trying to understand PG&E's methodology and who is really in charge. And it appears that the California Public Utility Commission is actually the gatekeeper, if you will, for what fire tier rating your community has. Where we are sitting right now this evening, this is a Tier Three, which is a high fire danger zone just across the freeway on Coleman Street. That is an extreme fire zone or Tier Four. Main Street, Mall of Main Street is a Tier Three or an extreme fire zone. So what we've done is come up with some, after a series of meetings, discussions with PG&E, discussions with Chief Cordero with his concerns of fire safety, looking at areas that surround us that the Utility Commission has rated as urban. I think we have a strong case to now come to you as a council to ask you to take the next actions. I have had preliminary discussions with David Roscoe with Senator Golly's office. Of course, the terrible fires this summer, you know, really put an impact on their ability for that office to respond, but they are aware of the problem. I believe that they're waiting for the city council to take the next step to actually formulate that request to have the Utility Commission rate Main Street as an urban zone. And I, there's a lot of detail to this, but I think that we've had all the local meetings that we've had, and it's now, you know, going to be up to Cleve and the council to decide if they want to pursue this. But I think it's very achievable. Probably not going to be easy, but I think we are up for the effort. Couple other really exciting things also in the conference, or, you know, coming back with Brandon Sanders is our rep, his confirmation on a number of programs, and the big one was the weather stations that is still in their pipeline. And he was adamant about bringing this back to us soon. And again, focusing on new weather stations in town and maybe partnering with the airport and really making a significant improvement up there for general or community safety as well as for their concerns with the wind in the fall. So that was very, great to hear that commitment. The other things that are listed in the report, Cleve and I were both very pleased with the updated information. The promised new underground connection for Escaton is actually designed. We asked, I don't know if Rebecca received it, but we asked for a draft of that design so that we could review it for conflicts. It is set for construction in late spring of '22, so that will eliminate that entire area from any future PSPSs. Same thing with the improvements that they had promised. That project will come to completion again in late spring of '22, and that's for the Ford New Road, Ray Lawyer, Placerville Drive, Commercial District, both sides of Highway 50. The necessary changes have been identified and the project is on schedule. So that was great news. Surprisingly, when we talked about the famous transmission switches, which was a real, you know, it will add almost a day to a PSPS outage if they have to shut the big transmission lines down. We did not have any of those last year that I recall. Of course, this year, we've had zero. So we found out during our update that PG&E intends to install new automatic switches at not only Placerville but also Camino. And that is a huge step forward in limiting the scope and time of the outages and future winds. Let's face it, the wind will blow, we will have another one of these outages. But again, the commitment to get that work done in 2022, again, that's on schedule with their past promises, and they have added some additional switches. So that tells me that they took a real hard look at that system, and so I congratulate them for that as exactly what this community needed. So again, it is a real pleasure to say, you know, to stand here and share with you and the community some real progress that we have made working with them. And the frustrations, I'm sure, have been mutual at times, but there is a steady body of evidence that shows that they are paying attention to our needs. And I think that we can look forward to a much, a much lower impact in our community next season. So just as a side note, since we have, we had Brandon back and we were kind of recasting everything, we brought up the Broadway building, the old substation building on Broadway next to Save Mart, which is in deplorable condition. They are still in a corporate tussle over whether they want to knock it down or just simply paint it. I'm kind of just in favor at this point. If we could just get them to paint it, it would be a huge improvement. And the seed was set in their minds that the City of Placerville Engineering Group hopes to do the Broadway paving. And it, we didn't realize, but we've been asking to paint the building for five years now. So I kind of suggest, well, it would be really great if, we'll just forget that, let's focus on 2022 and making sure you do whatever you need to do to beautify that site so that when we repaint Broadway, we will have a new and improved streetscape. So we'll see if we can hold your feet to that. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't have any questions, Mark, but good job.
Thank you.
Just one question, Mark, and again, all good news, this is great. On the transmission switches, I know some communities, there was concern that they were overly sensitive in terms of them tripping and then causing periodic, they weren't PSPSs, but they still were outages. And I know PG&E have been working to fine-tune that. Do we know, I mean, we have any sense of what these would look like when they come online? Are they going to sort of be so sensitive that we're going to get switch-offs in certain areas? Or is it the opposite where they'll be able to monitor PSPS better and localize the outages?
Thank you, Councilmember Saragosa. A good question, and that should have been something I added. Those transmission switches will not have that type of equipment attached to them. They're kind of operating at a whole different frequency. So, but you are absolutely correct. There had been a big impact all summer long to the sensitive settings that they had all of their existing automatic distribution switches set at. We had a series of outages over in the Bedford Coleman area. Every morning, it seemed like 7:00, between 6:30 and 7:00, there was a faulty piece of equipment. It finally worked its way out, but it was causing an eight-to-10-hour outage because of an overly sensitive switch. All the switches, according to our update from Brandon, have been reset to their normal operating standards, so we will not be subject to that. And I think you may have seen in local media, or regional media, excuse me, that that has been a big issue with a lot of communities, and the outcry to the CPUC and the Governor's Office has been huge because of those. Those outages were just unpredictable and horrendous in length. So good news for us.
Great. Thank you, Mark.
I just, I really wanted to thank you for all your time and effort and putting into us. It really has helped the city a lot, and to have you with your background and just focusing on that has helped a lot, and I just wanted to say we appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Noel.
I'd like to echo those sentiments. I know I've said this before, but I really think that your advocacy on behalf of the city with PG&E has drastically reduced the number and severity of the outages that we face as a city with all the hard work that you've put into it. So very much appreciated. And it is encouraging to see them making progress and that this year, knock on wood, is it safe to say that PSPS season is over?
Yeah, we're definitely done.
I think so.
It's, you know, it's been a relief to go a whole summer without having one of those. So hopefully, we can keep that up in future years.
It'll keep raining.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. And you're correct, we had a number of wind events, but with this new forecasting system, and correctly, there were no severe winds. The winds, once again, never reached their safety criteria here in Placerville, certainly and probably most of the county.
Mark, do you know why our power was out for almost two hours this year?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Councilmember Noel, for asking that question. Yeah. And I want to compliment PG&E's local responders. They had two troubleshooters on site very quickly. It was about 2,200 customers that were out. Again, that odd mix of one side of Main Street, not the other side of Main Street. And what happened was a failed surge arrester. So kind of a typical...
I think we're going to get Mark's phone number and just call Mark.
A typical sort of a thing. And I have to say, with the way they have their regionalized workforce, they handled it in a very timely manner. So I thank the local crews for their efforts.
Well, Mark, you did it. You got us through quite a bit of a year here and got us over the finish line with no PSPS, and I think the entire, our entire township should have some appreciation for the work that you have done here. And I echo all the sentiments that we have, that my colleagues up here have said, especially Kara, she kind of stole most of my thunder there. But, so what she said. And, you know, the relationship with PG&E has sometimes been a little tenuous, a little combative, and they finally paid attention to us and they responded, and it was done in a professional and collaborative way. And it's because of that effort that you put in, you know, that we're here today and not talking about PSPSs and our lights are on. So with that, thank you very much. And it's wonderful to see, great report. I was, honestly, before I read this, I wasn't expecting such a good report. So I was like, oh, gosh, here we go, PG&E.
And thank you for your kind words, and your observations are absolutely right. This last couple of years, this is a culmination of at least two years' work, a combination of Sarah Rashid's efforts, Brandon Sanders' efforts, Cleve's, mine, the City Engineering Department, and Police Fire, all working, you know, as a team with the various PG&E folks and just saying, now, wait a minute, just a minute. It doesn't need to be this way. We appreciate their PG&E's effort, and it's, that needs to be recognized.
Two things. The next step is to get them fired up on the underground, all the undergrounding that they, we had a meeting about a month ago, probably, with the Executive Vice President for this area, I can't remember what his whole title was, but, and he pretty much said that we are up on his priority list for undergrounding our utilities in this city. And they identify, what was it, how many tens out, how many miles, five miles of underground?
You're saying in Placerville? I forget the exact number.
It was a bigger number than I thought it was.
Yeah, yeah. They did recently, or supposed to have come out on November 1st with a plan of where those projects are going to be. I'm still waiting to see that from them. I got a notice of it, so.
Yeah. So that's good news. They have a commitment level. It's 10,000 miles in the state of California, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thousand miles a year, I think is what they're doing.
Mm-hmm. So for the next 10 years. So they're going to be slowly ramping up, but they said they were up on their list. That's a good thing as well, right? All right. Thank you very much, Mark.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. Is anybody from the public that would like to comment on this particular item? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back here, and we're going to move on to item 6.2. Receive a presentation from Elara Disposal regarding AB 1826 and Senate Bill 1383 regarding requirements for both commercial and residential food waste. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Morris for further introduction.
Actually, so we have Jeff England and Ross, Ross, I can't pronounce your last name, I'm trying to remember. Help me out.
Reece Secker.
Reece Secker, thank you. I know him, we meet all the time. I just know him as Ross, sorry. But they prepared this presentation. Also, just today, or today or yesterday, I guess, Delivered to Your Boxes was this document that they've put together for all of their agencies that kind of explain what is going on with this program. So just as an introduction, and Pierre will talk about this more later, we have this presentation, and then we also have the ordinance that is on your agenda later. And it's my understanding they'll be sticking around to comment if there's questions on the ordinance when we get to that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff and Ross.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present. Thank you, Cleve, and thank you, council. I'm Jeff England. I'm the site manager for the transfer station, and Ross is running the hauling company, our drivers, customer service, and shop there now. And so we're happy to present. Council, you do have, I believe, if you don't have it in front of you, have received our Leaders Guide to Organics in the County. What we intend to present tonight is a very condensed summary of that guide. We want to share at a high level really what's in the guide and the packet for you. We want to touch on three primary areas, give you an update on the transfer station and what's happening at the MRF, AB 1826, a commercial food waste, and then...
and what's happening at the MRF, AB 1826, a commercial food waste, and then where we are with Senate Bill 1383 there. And so what I, what I'd like to start with is just an update on the MRF. If you can see the pictures there, they show rather the recent progression on the, on the building of the main transfer building. The happy news to report is that we will be operational in that building later this month. We're very excited about that. We will be, we're installing new equipment, a material handler and things of that nature. What we will be able to do, once we get that started, is we'll begin with our trucks rolling in. It won't be long after that to where we're able to divert the public to the other side. The public will be on one side of the building, our trucks will be on another side of the building. This will enable a more efficient throughput at the gate. We still have some interesting adventures left though with the construction process. We've got a timeline there that we wanted to share, which is that in 2021, we will be operational in the new transfer building. Next year, we will be constructing the new administration building. So what you're looking at in that picture in the corner, the brand new building is the one in the lower right-hand corner. The new admin building will be to the left on that pad that you see there, and that will feature an education center. The building at the top is the existing structure and that will be demolished in the fall of next year. We'll have some adventures, moving things around and working as we have been while we've got a construction project in process and still doing all of the programs and things that we do at the MRF. But we've got a great crew up there and I'm very confident we will get through that and then be on schedule in 2023 for the next phase, which will be a secondary building, either an extension of the new one or a separate building out there. So we're very happy with the progress that we're making there. I'd like to talk briefly about AB 1826. As you know, this is the California mandate regarding commercial establishments and organics food waste programs. In what I'm, what, what we, what has changed probably since the last time we've all been together is that in September of 2020, Cal Recycle chose to lower the threshold from four yards a week of trash customers to two yards per week customers, commercial businesses, to potentially be compliant with 1826, depending on whether or not and how much organics they have in their waste stream. So the short math on what that shift entailed meant that we went from having 402 customers in El Dorado County total that were in the four yard threshold range to 1,867 customers, suddenly confronted with having to be in 1826 compliance. This is important, especially for, I think, the council and the city to understand the burden this place is on, especially on small businesses. Two yards is not a lot of trash. And so those are your mom and pops that are being, and have been affected by this. A note is that Cal Recycle chose to lower this threshold September 2020, when there was still no vaccine and the pandemic was still running rampant with, with small businesses and restaurants in particular. I share that, not because I'm here to complain about Cal Recycle, but to really reinforce that they are adamant about enforcing these mandates that they have with regard to getting organics out of the system. And that's really how we segue to 1383.
Quick, quick question.
Please.
Is that two yards a week?
Yes.
And then when you have multiple businesses using a collector dumpster, how does that work? Do you go out and survey individual customers or?
So all of those customers, if they use a shared enclosure, are subject to review and have to be vetted. What we end up with is a list of businesses who are required to be compliant and those who are exempt. A lot of our process that our sustainability people go through is to review lists, make a determination about whether they, they may be compliant. And then even if we say, because they're obvious, CNH Auto Parts, for example, not a lot of organics, you know, that those folks are generating up there. And, but we still, and so we can put them on the exempt list, but we are still expected by Cal Recycle to go back and literally either do a dumpster dive or have a driver take a picture of the inside of the bin to verify that there are no organics in there. That's the extent of the record keeping and, and vetting that we're expected to do before we declare someone exempt from AB 1826.
And that's your responsibility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Your, your time's coming, as we'll talk about when 1383, we get to that. What I'd like to, the other thing to share right now is we have been, we obviously were derailed during the pandemic as the restaurants were. We're now up to 147 customers, primarily restaurants, that are now on our commercial food waste routes being serviced each week, and that continues to grow. So I'm going to let Ross speak to our pilot program and Senate Bill 1383, and then we'll be happy to take questions.
Good evening, everybody. I realize I'm a new face to this group and it's, it's really important to me to kind of carry on the, the great work you've seen from Jeff for so long. So I look forward to having more of a presence with y'all and, and with that, I'll just, I'll just dive in. So 1383 is, is vast and it has a lot of components. One of the main reasons we created this Leaders Guide, Leaders Guide for you all. So you'll realize the slides that I'm about to go through are just bits and pieces of what you'll find in your Leaders Guide, just to give you the high points of 1383. To begin 1383, it, you know, it's not a one size fits all when it comes to the community we work and serve in. We really need to understand what our communities need here. So hence the reason we are conducting a pilot program. Some of the big questions that we need to answer in our pilot program are frequency of service, whether we need to be picking up food waste mixed with green waste weekly or doing it bi-weekly and, and in a sense, doing the same thing we're doing right now with our green waste routes. Another big question is, do we need to provide in-home pails where people put their food waste in the pail and have a way to transport it from their house to their green waste cart? You know, all these different metrics require different equipment, require costs. So it's important for us to figure out really what our community needs and figure out the costs associated with those needs and be able to present to you what the rates would look like for each sort of scenario we discover. Our pilot program right now, which started on October 27th, goes up Cold Springs, Mallard Lane, Highway 49. It encompasses a route in Placerville and also the county. Right now, we're starting with a bi-weekly service. We delivered those exact buckets you're seeing right there on the slide. We've already discovered a little bit about the buckets. We've seen them on the side of the road. We've seen people be grateful for them. We've even seen some with notes on the top that say, hey, I compost and I don't need it. So that's kind of our initial experience. We're also roping in online surveys through Survey Monkey. So everybody who's in this pilot program got a set of instructions with some links that they can provide their feedback. A lot of the survey questions, you know, involve, do you like it? Do you don't like it? Are you willing to pay more for a service like this? Are you okay with every other week? Do you need weekly and so forth? So that's, that's a kind of a quick snapshot of what our pilot program looks like right now, and we've got a second proposal location in some of our other jurisdictional areas. So again, to dive into some of the high points here, the basis behind 1383, you can see some of the, and by the way, this comes directly from Cal Recycle. So organics is the largest waste stream in California. It encompasses over two thirds of the waste stream, which equates to about six million tons annually. So the, the overall goal of 1383 is to, to keep waste out of the landfill, hence less methane offgassing, which contributes to climate change. So that's the basis of 1383. Here's a quick timeline. If you hone in on the middle of that, that's kind of where we're approaching right now. January 1st, 2022, you'll, you'll notice that regulations take effect and enforcement It's fast approaching. Cal Recycle has expressed to us through our calls and our communications that our, our process and progress is sufficient for, for where they want us to be. And we're on pace to implement July 1st, 2022, once we have enough time to, to learn from our pilot programs. You know, with the pandemic in kind of full blown throughout the last couple of years, many jurisdictions are behind when it comes to a lot of the initial Cal Recycle expectations. And so there's, there's a fair amount of lenience there. And I think as long as, you know, we're showing progress, programs and results, Cal Recycle remains happy. Here's a quick slide on one of the components of 1383. So this is some jurisdictional requirements around an edible food recovery program. So in a sense, Cal Recycle wants to identify edible food that is, is currently being thrown in the trash. And they want to find a way to get that to people in need. It's complicated. Many communities already have some sort of program in place and they want to identify whether that's sufficient in terms of capacity or if capacity needs to, to be increased. The county is working on a program for, for this particular component, and we believe there's a lot of potential to teamwork that, that program with the county. This slide is, is probably more beneficial to, for the county that kind of reference here. It talks about infrastructure requirements and this is kind of in terms of future development, increasing capacity to compost, which is the easiest way to divert food waste away from the landfill. So as you know, in, in California, reporting is, is often vast. Another one of the requirements here is inspecting and enforcing. You'll see the, kind of the first step in that slide is, is coming up with the ordinance, which we've, we've referenced already tonight and Placerville has drafted one that they will introduce later tonight. And the state will mandate that El Dorado County and Placerville have ordinances on the books and enforce them by 2024. So quite a ways out, but there's lots of requirements up and, up until then. Again, a lot of what they're looking for is progress with these things. Here's a quick slide on record keeping, another one of the jurisdiction requirements. Each one of those round icons there is, is an example of, of the requirements they're looking for. To give you a couple of examples, contamination minimization, one of the things that, that we will be required to do is literally flip lids and look for organics in the waste stream. How you do that and how easily you can see them, that's, that's a question we'll, we'll have to ask and figure out how to discover if that, if we can even see. You know, the state will be requiring a tremendous amount of record keeping and reporting. And I know the county currently is working on waivers for certain areas of the county that fall into population density requirements and whatnot. And with that, I think I had a quick slide in here for Pierre to touch on if, if you wanted to jump in there, Pierre.
Sure. I just have a few, few things to add. Regarding the, the first bullet ordinance written, we, we do have a draft ordinance that will be before you later on this evening. That's item 10.1. That's a draft ordinance that will implement or provide for the enforcement and the implementation capabilities for the city. The memorandum of understanding, staff is proposing and is working with county staff on a memorandum of understanding so that the county environmental management department would be implementing the food recovery program. The third bullet, private pilot program underway. Ross has already touched on that, and that's that pilot program where they're basically going to private residences and to determine how the program is going to work, what are the pitfalls, how can we really improve the program to make it work when they go to full implementation in July of next year. The fourth bullet, planning for food waste routes effective July 22nd. Ross touched on that. And the last bullet, yeah, I, our staff would concur with that. We, we are in contact with Cal Recycle regularly, just to make sure that, that they're not going to come down on us with any sanctions or fines because they do, they do have the power to do so. But I think as Ross pointed out, as long as we're making a good faith effort to comply, then there being a little lenient on us as far as not meeting the exact letter of when we're supposed to have everything fully implemented. But I think they are very pleased with where we are. We are ahead of other jurisdictions, so it's nice to report that out. Thank you.
Thanks, Pierre. And this last slide, I'm going to, I'm going to just turn it over to Jeff and then we'll open up for any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Ross. And really just the last one is to rather reiterate that Placerville has taken the very good first step of drafting an ordinance. It's required to have an ordinance on the books in 2022. And then the City of Placerville will be expected to have a mechanism for enforcing Senate Bill 1383 by 2024. And so it's, again, that, that really lends the gravity to the conversation that you'll start tonight regarding the ordinance. That involves interpreting 1383, the nature of mandatory and what that means and, and things of that nature are, will come into play. But again, this, this, the slides are directly from Cal Recycle's PowerPoint presentations. In the Leaders Guides that we've provided, the presenter's notes are included. We've also provided frequently asked question sections for 1826 as well as 1383. In short, you can get as into the weeds as you desire with the information that we've provided here. And then we are certainly available to answer questions here tonight and at any point that you may have, and we're happy to come back and address the council as this process and project progresses. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you. Questions?
First, thank you, Jeff and Ross, for that detailed explanation of what's coming, what's, what's coming down the pipe here. Is there any questions? Yes, please.
Let me comment and question, but can you just go over the food recovery again? That one kind of blew my mind. I just want to make sure I heard all that correctly.
Sure. Fundamentally, what the state expects, and please jump in here if I miss a, miss a piece, fundamentally, the state expects that a, that the City of Placerville and El Dorado County will be working with entities within the area to identify where food is being thrown away that could be saved and enable distribution systems to get food to people who need it. That may sound rather pie in the sky, but El Dorado County right now is currently working with the Food Bank as an example, the El Dorado County Food Bank. The, a lot of the mandate and role playing in this is really to facilitate this activity and to ensure that these things are in place and that they're working towards them. Again, the county already has a process and a, and a program in place, as it were, through the Food Bank. Here in the City of Placerville, you know, we're certainly aware of the Upper Room. Hands for Hope has a food closet. There are opportunities to meet that requirement and, but they require some, you know, creativity and, and working with folks like the Food Bank and those to, you know, to really get, identify places to get the food from and then to get the food distributed and out there. But that's really what they're actually looking to do.
And this is actually, and I know Kara may have much better understanding, this is like a prepared food. Because my, my understanding always was if it was something left over at the end of the day, went into trash because of legal reasons and others, somebody gets sick, what have you. Have they taken care of those legal issues as it comes to?
I think, I think that, please, you know, correct me here. This may be an area, as you'll find with a lot of 1383, that is intentionally vague.
I mean, I'm sure the trial lawyers love that.
Yeah, are, are the ones who are, let's say, empowered to figure it out. There, there have been restrictions for years and years about, you know, There have been restrictions for years and years about, you know, everything from, you know, being able to take, I used to work at Crystal Dairy a long time ago, and when we, you know, had to throw away a pallet of yogurt, we used to be able to take it to a hog farmer. A lot of those things are different now and that you can't do that you used to be able to do then. So I know they've tightened up a lot of those restrictions, but how clear those parameters are, I'm really not that sure right now. There are a lot of this in this that is open to interpretation, and they know that. They expect us to do a lot of the figuring out.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Along those lines, you know, with the section on food recovery, I imagine that that referred primarily to grocery stores, which throw away, you know, a lot of canned goods and dairy that's maybe close to the expiration date and things like that. Is that mostly what is being referred to?
That's a lot of it. That is a lot of it. But they are very open. In fact, there is a provision regarding restaurants having a capability to enable food to be taken out. There's a rather micro level of oversight with regard to things like restaurants throwing food away and making sure that they have the ability to send food home or capture it if it's salvageable.
Okay. Thank you.
So what you're saying, I kind of experienced what you were talking about when you worked for the dairy, but I had a dog that had to eat a lot of cottage cheese. And the stores used to give it to me, and all of a sudden, they figured out that people were claiming they had an animal, et cetera, and they were taking it home for human consumption. And so they stopped the whole program. So, you know, you have all these incentives and you have all these reasons for, you know, I mean, there were probably a lot of other people out there like me that could have used that program, and yet, you know, it's stopped. It's not allowed. So I'm wondering, it's promoting me to say, is this going to happen with some of the things that they're, you know, hoping is going to happen with this program?
I try to avoid over-speculating on predicting what Cal Recycle, you know, may or may not do, Patty.
I couldn't help but bring it up.
No, that's okay. It's a good story because it does reflect, one, how things have changed with regard to food safety in particular. And it does seem that there, you know, that this mandate may be at odds with some of those things. That's not unusual, though. You've got legislation to get organics out of landfills, and it may be in conflict at times with other areas of California law. This, again, is where we get to rather interpret and work through these things on our own, and then tell Cal Recycle, here's how we did it. And then they'll say, oh, great. That happens a lot, actually.
So you were saying, I have a commercial building, and I think this is what Dennis was kind of, and practically all my tenants use the same dumpster, but my restaurant has their own. I had a situation where I had another restaurant, and they claimed, and I told them, you know, because I was going to have to have extra pickup because of their, you know, and they claimed that they were, that they had a person who came, that they saved all theirs, and they had a person come by, and they were giving all their organics to their animals. And how, and I know they weren't. So you're going to have the drivers take pictures? Is that how you're?
Well, when we exempt someone, there's a vetting process that we're expected to go through, which can include literally lifting up the lid and taking pictures, although when everything's in black plastic bags, that we don't find that particularly helpful, which we've explained, you know, to Cal Recycle, hey, here's the pictures we took, and we're not going to open up the bags and look in them. But they set these expectations, and then reality rather meets the road sometimes, and adjust and go forward becomes our mantra.
I just have one more comment. I'm actually part of the pilot study right now, and I'll fill out that survey. I think I might have thrown away the little pamphlet that was in the bin when it came with that information. Yes, absolutely. That's what I meant to say. But I will fill out that survey. It's definitely taking some getting used to. There's, it's a little challenging, the bin, the plastic bin.
The ick factor?
It's a little icky. It's not quite, it's not quite like composting, which is just vegetable scraps, because you actually throw in, like, raw meat and, you know.
We tried to provide information about layering and, you know, those kind of things that are rather easier said than done.
But I do think it's important, I mean, I think it's important, you know, I'm supportive of it. It's definitely going to take a little getting used to, I think, for everybody. No doubt, you have a monumental task implementing this mandate, and I'm, you know, definitely concerned about the work that it's going to be for city staff, which I'm sure we'll all talk about more when we get to the ordinance. One question for you. Can we use compostable bags in the bin to, like, does that work?
They are fine. Where we will be taking this material is Napa Recycling has a facility in Yolo County. The material will be wind rode, composted, in those huge wind rode composting rows, and that's where it will go and where we'll take it. So yes, those are fine.
All right. Great. Thanks.
I only have a comment regarding, just, it's one more instance that the state of California is putting more costs and raising our cost of living in an already expensive state. And at some point, we'll be passing this cost along to our customers, your customers, and honestly, our customers here in the city. And just raising our expenses without any consideration to how that's affecting them. And our tax dollars are going towards paying for this, and it's just, it's driving me nuts.
Yeah. Your commercial businesses have been going through this for some time already. And again, one of the reasons why we wanted to share is to have clarity about, you know, the timeline and really, you know, how we're approaching this, which is to run the pilots. We'll be incrementally adding areas to the pilots, but really, the goal is to fully understand all related costs and then be able to come to you and the other jurisdictions and essentially present service levels. You will get to, you know, ask yourself, do I want to pay for every week's service to mitigate the ick factor? Which, you know, isn't insignificant, first, the ick factor or the cost. If we have to, because right now, we service green waste every other week. If we had to do it every week, then the simple math tells you I have to have half the number of trucks and drivers that I have now in order to execute that. A brand-new garbage truck right now, residential, runs about $400,000. We are already buying 18 new trucks next year because of carb. Doesn't have anything to do with this. So I can tell you that our corporate folks are really rooting for every other week and that we don't have to ask them for any more trucks than we already are. But this is really why we run the pilots. While we'll run alternating weeks, we'll run weekly, we'll seek the feedback from, you know, from your folks out there, and then we'll be able to come to you in early 2022 and say, here's what it costs to do it weekly, here's what it costs to do it every other week, here's what it costs if we put a bucket in every kitchen, and so on and so forth. And that'll be the decision-making that you folks will have.
And there will be no, from what I understand, there'll be no, are we getting into our agenda item with a lot of this, probably?
Not so far.
Some of this will be.
There won't be any opportunity to exempt a household that says they recycle. I mean, they have their own composting. There's a lot of people in this community that does their own composting and their own gardening and.
No, we've been very disappointed that there are no credits, for lack of a better description, when people communicate that they compost. What we are required to do is provide the ability for people to marry it up with their green waste and, you know, provide that service. We intend to track as much as possible so that we can identify those things and communicate it. We also, although we may not get credit for it, want you to know that our sustainability team in El Dorado Disposal are also very supportive and encouraging of community gardens and composting programs. And when those opportunities come around, we think it's important that we are actively helping those projects, whether they count towards compliance or compliance rates or not. Ultimately, what will be all rated on is the amount of diversion, which in short, gets down to the amount of material that's going to landfill relative to the population numbers. And that's how we'll all get rated at the end.
On a completely separate note, I want to express my appreciation, all the ways that you work with the city to support our events, to support our garbage, twice a year, days that you provide for, what is that called?
Clean up.
Clean up days. And, you know, whenever we needed to call, you guys are always supportive of the city. So, you know, in that light, I do appreciate our partnership in that way. So thank you for that as well.
I appreciate that. And please know, you know, we're really open to hearing from you guys about anything, whether it's an individual constituent or a program or anything of that nature. This 1383 is going to have to be a collaborative process, so we appreciate the good teamwork we have here.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, did you have something to rest? Okay, great. I'm going to open, does anybody want to have any public comment on this particular item? If you want to, let's see.
Mine is more like a question for Jeff, is that the only time that I have any significant amount of green waste is harvest time for apples and peaches and pears from my little, my few fruit trees. And so the ones that are not edible, that the worms got to first and stuff, those would be about the only thing I would have for green waste, because I shop carefully and I use what I buy. So I don't have a lot of green waste to put in a bucket. So what would happen in that case? Would I just request a bucket for when the peaches, pears, and apples are there?
All right. We'll pass that question along.
Just a brief comment. $400,000 for a facilities garbage refuse truck, times 18 would be approximately $7 And I don't know enough about it to really question it, but I would just compare it to my repeated request for a porta potty for 50 to 100 human beings on Upper Broadway.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Anybody else like to comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. The one question, a seasonal bucket, I'm guessing that people are just going to get a bucket, and when it's out, and they have refuse to put in it, that you'll pick it up. Does that sound about right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We're going to bring back any further comments or discussion. All right. Thank you very much, Jeff and Ross, for taking the time to kind of highlight what's coming before us over the next, what, two years? Two, three years? Next 20 years, who knows? It's probably not going to get any better, it's just going to keep getting more challenging and more expensive. I'm sorry, that was very negative. It's been a good evening. So, all right, moving on. Brief comments by the city council. Miss No, no? Patty?
Okay, I wrote it down so I could remember. So I guess we usually tell what we've been doing. We had our city's final Good Government Session. We all attended, and it was great. We're waiting for the final presentation for the comments. And I attended a couple of the El Dorado Pneumatic Shelter meetings, and a LAFCO meeting and a LAFCO budget meeting. And I am sorry to say that I missed the Transportation Commission meeting, and I missed this fire safe meeting because I had a previous commitment. And unfortunately, I don't have a report. I know you guys all went to transportation, but I don't have one on the fire safe. And I just want to comment on our city, our town center parking lot, how beautiful it is, and what a great job our staff and everybody did, and what a pleasure to drive on it now and be able to see the parking places, and all good. And I thank you for all the work you put into that.
All right. We were passed. Michael.
Yeah, same tenant, I mean, I thought the governance meeting went really well for city council and staff. I thought that was helpful for our planning and look forward to the strategic planning session we're going to do later on as well. I think those two will, you know, go hand in hand. It was fun to see all the kids and adults out for Halloween on Main Street. That was great. And for us to be able to do that again. And then also attended the Arts and Culture El Dorado event, where we, where Lexi Boger was honored for her work in the community. It was great, it was well-attended. It was the first time seeing a lot of faces in some time over the last two years, so that was a fun event as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Yeah, I also was at the Lexi Boger recognition for her work in the arts culture, as well as, you know, her work, she crosses a lot of barriers and brings different groups of people together in her work, and she was recognized for that. And I've seen her in action a couple of times, and her ability to communicate and talk across barriers has been helpful in moving events forward and bringing people together in our community. And it was a good day to recognize her efforts. And it's nice to highlight, you know, we focus so much on challenging issues in our community, it's nice to highlight some of the good every once in a while. Governance Workshop was, I think, a great day for us to get together, kind of talk about how to be more effective as a council, how to, you know, we worked really hard at going through a process to be a better council and to find better ways to do the same thing we're doing, to better ways of communication with staff. And so I really appreciate it, all the time and energy that everybody put into it, because we had, it was a good day, we had our staff there, and we had our council there, so I appreciate everybody's input. It's nice to see, was the festival, was the lights up the last meeting?
Not last time, no.
No, they are up, and they look great. And so I, there's a bulb out, by the way. There you go again. Eeyore here. So, but they look wonderful. And so thank you for getting that over the finish line. And our tree is getting worked on.
Yes, the lighting company is supposed to get the lights up and going over the weekend.
All right. Well, thank you. And I have been attending many Festival of Light meetings, and along with Terry at times and Rebecca at times, and we're going to have one humdinger of an event. It is going to be, it's going to be bigger and better than we ever have. I hate to say how great it's going to be, because I don't want to have to top it again next year, but it truly is an event for our community, for this town and our surrounding area, to come out and celebrate the beginning of Christmas season. Like, you know, everybody starts at a different day, but that's when we're starting it for the city. We're turning on the lights at 6 o'clock, there'll be events leading up to that. We're starting at 4 o'clock, and this is the day after Thanksgiving, so it's Friday, and I think it's the 27th? 26th? 26th. And, you know, it's for this community, and it's for this community to come together without all the challenges and just celebrate the beginning of this Christmas. And there's going to be a lot of singing, we're going to have some amazing things going on, some surprises that we have planned for it, and it'll just be a lot of fun. I just hope everybody can make it. It's going to be a great event. That's all I have. All right. All right. So we have the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are enacted routine, are considered routine, and will be enacted by one motion, by roll-call vote, unless any member of this council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member is. The reading of the full text of, of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, is there any comments or discussions?
I just wanna note that I need to recuse myself from 7.8, so my vote will be for consent, 7.1 through 7.7.
All right.
Same. I'll recuse myself from 7.8.
All right. Any other comments or discussions on the consent calendar? All right. I will note that, that we, that we do have El Dorado Arts and Culture, no, yeah, El Dorado, Arts and Culture El Dorado here as a representative, in case we had any questions about the resolution approving the extension of the lease agreement. I'll just like to make a brief comment regarding this. Do they have to leave if I make a brief comment and we're not pulling it?
I do want to get a little clarity, is the recusal because of a conflict of interest? If so, the conflict has to be disclosed on the record and you should step down from the dais.
Yes. My wife serves on the board for Arts and Culture El Dorado.
And I have an incubator program with Arts and Culture El Dorado.
And just for my comments and no discussion, I'm not pulling the item.
We can't move forward with the, with the balance of the item while they're up here, so.
All right. That's fine. This will only take like 10 seconds, so don't go too far.
Stand at the door.
I just, I wanted to acknowledge that, you know, this is an item that has come before us quite a bit and we've been working on this for quite, quite a bit of time. And I know that we're very close to having some kind of an agreement and with Arts and Culture for, for the use of Immigrant Jane and Confidence Hall Building. And, and so, I wanted to express my appreciation for all the hard work that's gone into that by Cleve and Arts and Culture. And, and so, thank you for being here to, to answer any questions. I don't think we have any, but I wanted to at least acknowledge that, that this is what we're moving through. It's a month-to-month lease, because we're that close that we just wanna get this over the finish line and, and take care of that. So, and thank you for that work. With that, do we bring them back in?
We can proceed with this item here and, right, and then bring them back for the balance of consent.
Gotcha. Okay. If, if, is there any comments on this particular item from the, on item, which item is that? 7.7?
7.8.
7 point, oh, sorry, 7.8 of the consent calendar. All right, seeing no comments, we'll bring it back to the council for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right. If you can bring him back in, please.
Did we make a motion? Nobody made a motion. I was getting ready to make a motion.
All right, okay. I'm sorry, I'll, I'll move item 7.8.
Second?
All right, we got a second. Does the vote count still? Vote counts, we're good. All right. Bring him back in. That was kinda funny. How many different ways can we screw this up?
Moving right along.
All right. We started laughing when you guys walked in, so I don't know. All right. Okay, so, okay, so, we're coming back, is there, go ahead, open up for a public comment on any items 7.1 through 7.7 on the consent calendar. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back. Any further discussion on 7.1 through 7.7 consent calendar? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
That was the most complicated of my calendar we've done, I think.
I probably couldn't have made that less complicated. All right, public comments on non, let's see, are we there? Yes, public comments on non-agendized items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda and that is, that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the City Council. State law prohibits the City Council from acting on any item not listed on the agenda except by special action of the City Council under special circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make any personal attacks on individuals or make any comments which are slanderous, which, or which may invade an individual's personal property. With that, we're gonna move to written communication and we actually have one written communication.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The written communication is a letter from Ron Mueller, who was recognized during our Goldbug Park ceremony. And I don't know if you want to read it or, but it's, it's in your agenda, just thanking the council for the monument and the recognition, the monument plaque at Goldbug Park that was done recently.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. And moving on to oral communication, this is a point where anybody in the council, any, excuse, sorry, anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council on an item not on the agenda, please step forward to the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm back here again. It's raining right now. Fire season is over. Oh, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and member of the Fire Safe Council. And since it's raining and fire season is over, but it will be back before you know it. So, now is the time to get out there and look at your property and make sure that you can follow and be in line with the city's ordinances on getting rid of hazardous vegetation and making your, your property at least fire resistant. I'm not sure there's anything totally fire safe, but if you make it fire resistant, you have a lot better chance to survive. So, everybody, get out there. Now's the time. Don't wait until May when the fire season starts again. Do it now.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Make it your Christmas present to Placerville to get your property in line.
All right. All right, anybody else? All right, Jane?
I'm feeling a little stiff. Hi, Jane McGinnis. I wanted to discuss something that nobody really likes to hear, and so, I apologize before I begin in case I offend anyone, but we live in the real world here. So, I have a kind of cottage industry ministry to the homeless, which is called the Homeless Sisters Outreach.
Jane, can I have you approach the mic a little more or bend it down?
Okay.
Yep. Or talk louder, either way.
It feels like it's booming. Is that not too loud? Okay.
You're good.
I have a little cottage industry ministry to the homeless women. And it's, it's very much on my heart. There are about 90 women scattered among the homeless here on the Western Slope, out in camps here and there. And they are mostly overlooked and many of them routinely assaulted if they're not, if they haven't hooked up with one particular man who may or may not be abusive. Rarely does anybody ask them what they think or what they want or what they need. And they don't often have the opportunity to talk to one another. They're about as isolated as they can be. And so, we began just handing out little slips at the upper room, saying, what do you need? Is there something that you need? And I gathered three or four of them together and asked them in a private conversation, what's the one thing you need the most? And I thought they were going to say respect or someone to talk to. They said bras. We don't have foundations. And they were too embarrassed to ask anybody about it. So, we started out there and it went to aspirin and Kleenex and chapstick and toothpaste, socks. But something has come up in the last two or three months and it's happened enough that I really feel I need to share it with everyone, because this is part of what it's like to live homeless. Maybe not for the men, but for the women, it's not uncommon. As I was discussing the items on the little slip with a woman, she said, is there any way you could get me some, oh, you know, those panties incontinence, I think they're called? I've been asked now by six or seven different women for this. I'm routinely going to the thrift stores and getting huge packages that are turned in by families of people who have died without using all of their supplies. Because in the night, it is not safe for women in the camps to go looking for a place in the woods. They have no bathroom. And I wanted to bring this back to the Broadway camp. I know I have heard over and over, there's no place to put a porta potty. I know that there are things like bulldozers, bobcats, there's a place, we could find a place at the bottom of that camp where we could dig in and level a spot for a porta potty. Basically, these women are using the incontinence panties so that they don't have to get up in the night. I leave it to your imagination to what that kind of a life is like for someone, a human being, living in our city. You may not be living where you'd like them to be living, but they're living in our city. And meanwhile, I will continue to give them what I can, which is big packages of women's incontinence panties. I am begging you, find a way to put a porta potty at the top of Broadway until we can figure something else out that includes a shelter. But this is just inhumane. So, thank you. Thanks for listening, that was hard to say.
Yeah, thank you, Jane.
Jonathan? Jonathan Gainesborough, good evening, Council. I say amen to what Jane is saying, having worked on the streets for 50 years. I'd never even heard of that. But it is a crime against humanity, what we're doing with our homeless. It's a crime against humanity not to put a porta potty out there. It isn't digging into three or four feet of hill to find a 30 by 30 inch square place. It would only be digging into perhaps 16 inches and even not that much, maybe several wheelbarrows, a dozen wheelbarrows full of dirt at the most. Yeah, I see the clock moving, but thank you for listening. Two years ago, I have a, I have a copy of a letter here from Mark Maron. We were talking about a, a class action civil rights suit with Martin Boise. I'm glad that we didn't have to go there. I salute you all for realizing that Martin Boise is to humanize us, not to persecute or penalize us. But anyway, this morning at four hours at the county supervisors' meeting, there's about 20 people at public comment and there was some very good dialogue. The sheriff was there. He said, why did you speak against me? And I said, well, two years ago, you know what you said. You said publicly. And I gave you copies of what he said about birds in the backyard and what they would drop on the lawn furniture. I said, but you, you've changed your mind and we all have a right to change our mind. And I'm glad that you've, you've pushed towards the hostess program. Well, the hostess program, I talked with Liz Drummond, who wrote it. She's willing to rewrite it to make it housing first and pets, property and, and persons, whatever the three Ps are, of a low, a low, low barrier shelter. So, there's some give and take all around, but I spoke at a conference with people in, at counties from all over California and I was ashamed to say that El Dorado County is one of four counties out of 58, we're either 55th, 56th, 57th, or 58th with no year-round shelter. I can't leave behind the hygiene issue. I just am ashamed, I'm not a better public speaker. I'm ashamed I can't weep and convince you all we have to get a roof over these human beings who were out in the rain last night and all day today. God is God, not me. I don't count, I'm nothing. Nobody's nothing, but the, the lepers are nothing that we leave out to, to live like dogs in the rain. We wouldn't even leave our dogs out. Chief, Chief Rem would persecute anybody who left a dog out in the rain last night, much less 140-year rain a week and a half ago with six or eight inches of rain. I know the time is up. But there's, there's motion at the county and you all are, were brave enough to say we know we're 10 to 15 years behind. Let's not stay 10 or 15 years behind, let's move ahead, let's get out of being behind and lead. And I want to be proud of El Dorado County and you all are beautiful, decent human beings, but we've got to at least have a warming center or a dry center. We've got to do something. They're not animals, they're not lepers, they're our brothers and sisters. Please, let's do something this winter in the midst of moving toward a long-term shelter, which hopefully Wendy shared with you a copy of what the resolution was.
We'll get to that, Jonathan. Thank you, thank you very much.
Movement coming. God bless you all. Let's do something, though, this winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comments? I'd like to, I'd like to thank our supervisor, Wendy Thomas, for leaving her council, her supervisor chambers and coming directly here, I imagine, without stopping go or anything. So, thank you for being here. I know that we'll look forward to maybe a few of your comments as we get on to, through the agenda. So, thank you for, for that, for showing up. Moving on, ordinances, item 10.1, waive a full reading, make any amendments to and introduce said ordinance by title. The ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Placerville, California, adding Chapter 1B to Title VII of the Placerville Municipal Code Regarding Organic Waste Disposal Reduction Requirements and Making a Determination of the Exempt Persuasive to SEQA. Item number two, direct that the proposed ordinance be placed on the agenda for the December 14, 2021 City Council meeting for the adoption. And I am going to turn this over to Mr. Rebus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just start with a little introduction. Fortunately, the council is well-versed now in where we're at because of the El Dorado disposal presentation, which I think gave you a very broad brush of the background of where we're at. So, this will be a little bit more in, in the weeds. So, let me start just by saying that SB 1383 was signed into law on September 17 of 2020. This bill is part of the California's short-lived climate pollutant reduction strategy. And I want to stress that, because that's the real goal of what 1383 is supposed to do, is reduce greenhouse gases. I think it's secondary that it's to reduce organic materials going in the landfill, but primarily do that to reduce methane emissions from the landfill of organic materials such as food and yard waste to stem climate change. The two efforts are to require organic waste recycling and the recovery of surplus food. SB 1383 requires a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal, starting with the levels of 2014 by 2020 and a 75% reduction by 2025. That will require the diversion of up to 27 million tons of organic waste by 2025 to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Landfills emit 20% of the state's methane, which that constituent is 84 times greater than carbon dioxide as a greenhouse gas. The new law also requires recovery of surplus food. California has a goal to redirect to people in need at least 20% of edible food currently thrown away by the year 2025. This new law will impose monitoring and record-keeping requirements. And this will be, this will be a large burden on the city to implement that. And enforcement to ensure implementation of the state regulations. Fortunately, stringent enforcement won't, won't need to happen until 2024. So, the proposed municipal code update that is included as Attachment 1 contains the following components that the city is required by state law to incorporate into an enforceable ordinance. So, Section 1 is definitions. So, as part of AB 1383, the rulemaking process, CalRecycle, developed many new defined terms with very specific meanings tied back to Public Resources California Code of Regulations. So, in order to be more precise in compliance with the specific state recycling requirements on businesses and on residences, the city introduced many of these terms that's in that section. So, Section 2, that's requirements for single-family generators. So, this section outlines the specific requirements for residents to be in compliance with SB 1383. 1383. Residents must, one, have access to an organics recycling program that was, basically was described by El Dorado Disposal in their presentation. So the cart with the green lid that can accept landscaping and food waste. Two, placement of all organic waste in their curbside organic recycling container. Three, place all dry recyclables in their recycling cart, the cart with the blue lid. And then four, not place non-organic or non-recyclable contamination in the blue-lidded or green-lidded recycling carts. And I think that's really important because when you co-mingle a lot of these materials, it, it could render the inability to have a market for the recyclable materials. We're one of the, we're a, we're, we have a very exceptional clean amount of organics that we currently get from our restaurants, meaning that El Dorado Disposal is be able to take this material directly to the UC Davis digester. So they accept that because of it's, it's so clean that it's able to be accepted by that particular facility. So we want to maintain that and not allow contamination. Section 3, this is regarding requirements for commercial businesses. This section outlines the specific requirements for businesses and multifamily properties to be in compliance with SB 1383. Businesses and multifamily properties must, one, have access to an organics recycling program, such as a cart or dumpster with a green lid that can accept landscaping and food waste. Two, place all organic waste in the organics recycling container. Three, place all dry recyclables in their recycling container, the cart or bin with the blue lid. And four, not to place non-organic and non-recyclable contamination in the blue-lidded or green-lidded recycling bins. Five, businesses must train staff on which materials are acceptable in the recycling and organics recycling programs. Six, businesses must include signage and color-coded lids on the recycling and organics recycling bins in consumer-facing locations such as lobbies or dining areas or fast casual locations. And then seven, periodically monitor for contamination of recycling and organics recycling streams. And so, as you learned in the presentation by El Dorado Disposal, I think a lot of the heavy lifting will be on them to actually, since they're the ones actually collecting the material, to do that monitoring. Whereas the city then has the requirement to ensure compliance. So it'll be a lot of paperwork for us, a lot of monitoring, and finally enforcement for, for those that choose not to comply. Section 4 is waivers for generators. This section allows businesses that, one, do not generate high volumes of organic waste, which is defined as less than 10 to 20 gallons per week, or, two, do not have adequate space in their trash enclosures to apply for compliance waiver from the city. These would be called our physical space waivers. Section 5 is in regards to edible food recovery requirements, and this section requires certain food service businesses to make arrangements with edible food recovery operations to recover edible food. Tier 1, tier 1 businesses, which mostly consist of grocery stores, will be required to make arrangements to recover edible food by 2022. And tier 2 businesses, which mostly consist of large hotels, hospitals, and large restaurants, will be required to have edible food recovery programs by 2024. So we have a lot of time actually to implement some of these more difficult tasks. These entities will be required to report to the city regarding edible food recovery activities on an annual basis. Similarly, Section 7 requires edible food recovery agencies to provide reports to the city. It would be like the food bank, for example. So Section 6 is addressing requirements for haulers and facility operations. This section requires haulers and organics facility operators to provide reports to the city. It also requires the city's exclusive franchise hauler, which is El Dorado Disposal, to provide organics recycling service and to take organics to an organic waste processing facility. Section 7 is regards to the self-hauler requirements. This section does allow businesses to self-haul their organic waste, such as spoiled produce from a grocery store or landscaping waste handled by a landscaping contractor, and we have quite a few of those, provided that the materials are taken to a recycling facility and that the business provides the city with reports. As you'll learn, AB 1383 is heavy on the monitoring and reporting. Section 18, or Section 8 is regarding procurement requirements for city departments, direct service providers, and vendors. This section requires landscape contractors hired by the city to use mulch and compost that meets the standards set forth in SB 1383 that are required in order for the city to be eligible to apply for this tonnage towards the city's recycling organic content procurement target. This section also requires any direct service providers that provide paper or paper products to the city to use recycled content paper. Section 9 is in regards to compliance with CalGreen recycling requirements and the Model Water Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance, or WLO, requirements, which we already have sections of our code that pertain to these. This section requires certain new building and tenant improvement projects that are covered by CalGreen to expand existing or build new enclosures to house all three waste streams, such as trash, recycling, and organics. This section also requires that projects include certain areas of landscaping that apply, landscaping, that they would apply mulch and compost to these landscape areas. Section 10 addresses inspections and investigations by the city and enforcement. So this section is authorizing city officials entry into non-residential properties. I want to stress that because there's always a concern about residential properties. It doesn't grant the city staff the ability to enter somebody's place of residence to assess compliance. This section outlines the enforcement protocols for non-compliance. Businesses have 60 days after the initial notice of violation to implement SB 1383, compliant recycling program before facing monetary penalties from $100 to $500 per violation. This section references the city's existing administrative citation and appeals process that already exists. And again, I'll stress it, enforcement, really, we have until 2024, so we have some time to really hone in on how we're going to do this. Section 11, this is just the effective date of this ordinance. The effective date of this ordinance shall be 30 days from the date of its adoption, which will, staff hopes is 30 days from the date of your December 14 meeting, which would be January 13 of 2022. I just want to say that Sections 2 and 3, and that Sections 2 and 3 are not of the code per se, but of the overall ordinance. Section 1 being the ordinance that we're, that's before you, and then Section 2 and 3 will modify Chapter 1 of Title 14 of the city's construction regulations and Chapter 6 of the Water Efficiency Landscaping Regulations that's in Title 10. So these are different sections of the code, and the purpose of that is to provide reference to Section 7-1B. So these changes basically require that any landscaping areas greater than 500 square feet with new construction would use compost and/or mulch by making reference to the new ordinance, which is 7-1B-11. And staff believes that the main purpose is to create a market for compost and mulch in accordance with the state Model Water Efficiency Landscaping Ordinance requirements. So I guess in closing, in closing, the ordinance implementation, once we have this adopted, are three main things, and staff will develop procedures for implementation, especially with the enforcement section. We're working very closely with El Dorado Disposal. We'll also be coordinating with El Dorado County Environmental Management Department as well. So is what stated earlier in the presentation by El Dorado Disposal. It's a very collaborative effort. We're all trying to work together to make this happen because it's, it's a little onerous. The second point that I have here is development of an MOU. It's a memorandum of understanding with El Dorado County regarding the food recovery program. El Dorado County already does this, and it, and it makes sense for the economy of scales for them just to, you know, do it on behalf of the city, since we only have a few of our department stores where, or our grocery stores where a lot of this recovery food is generated. And then item 3, amendments to the franchise agreement with El Dorado Disposal. As you've learned, a lot of this upfront responsibility is on our franchise hauler, and so, as most jurisdictions are doing currently, we will review and update our franchise agreement with El Dorado Disposal to ensure clear direction on who's doing what. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and, and I think, I believe El Dorado disposal staff are here too. If they get really into it, they probably know a lot more about it than I do. But that concludes staff's report. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Pierre. I don't know if your numbering doesn't match the numbering in our paperwork.
I was having a hard time.
But there seems to be a conflict.
He had made his own notes, and I think your numbering got off towards the end, Pierre, but the numbering in the ordinance is correct that you have before you, so.
Yeah, these are my own notes that I put together, and towards the end, I was combining a couple of the sections. So example, after Section 8, I combined 9 and 10, and then it was, yeah, 10, and I'll...
We just go to 7.
Yeah, so they were kind of combined.
Gotcha.
So, sorry about the confusion there.
So I, I'm going to go ahead and start this questioning off. So is any new house, not that a lot of new houses are being built around here, but if a new house is being built, are they going to be required to have a, it looks like they're required to have a landscape designer design their landscape and submit the plans to make sure they follow all these guidelines? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a very good question, Mayor, because, you know, typically, a single-family residence is not required to submit a landscaping plan to the city for review and approval, such as commercial, where you have a site plan review requirement, they are required to submit a landscaping plan. It's usually subject to either staff review or would be subject to review of the planning commission. And so that's where we would be able to ascertain the size of the area to be landscaped and whether or not they have to comply with the mulch requirement. So that's an area where we're going to have to consult with CalRecycle and, and maybe see how other jurisdictions are implementing that, because that is a very good question. If, if a new home, a large home with a lot of landscaping and it's greater than 500 square feet, my understanding with SB 1383 is they're required to use mulch.
And if I have two acres?
That's a lot of mulch.
Okay. Thank you. But I do get 5% for a bug habitat, so I'll be sure and take advantage of that.
You know, I, I almost was going to include that in my presentation because I love that, about the 5% of beneficial insects in your, in your mulch landscaping area.
I'm glad our, we're, yeah, forget it.
Anyways.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for staff? Can, I'm gonna, I just want to follow. So are we going to be required to have this for every single-family home built, or is this, you know, we live in a urban, what's it called?
Urban wildland interface.
And so, do we qualify for some exemptions there, or is this part of the, of the ambiguity of this whole program?
There's a lot of ambiguity. I think it's, it's rather new, and, you know, was just adopted in 2020, passed into law. So I think, you know, when you look at the section regarding the insects, I mean, that sounds well and good, but what exactly does that mean? Are we going to implement that? So as I said at the end of my presentation, staff is going to put together, staff will need to put together some requirements and procedures on how to fully implement this correctly, and I'll be working with our liaison that we have with CalRecycle. So we've got a, a very good rapport with her, and I'm sure our relationship will continue to grow as we ascertain what is exactly what we're supposed to be doing.
All right, thank you.
Can I add one thing to that, too? You asked about exemption, and maybe Ross can, can help me if I get this wrong, but there was a provision for exemptions from many provisions of 1383. El Dorado County applied for those, but those were basically based on density and elevation. If you're above a certain elevation, unfortunately, we did not meet either one of those requirements. Is that correct, Ross and Jeff?
They need to change their...
Elevation and density were the two, the criteria that I saw that...
They have waste, they eat.
Okay.
Anyway, so I just want to let you know that.
I've got some questions. Well, and some comments. First, Pierre, I know that this was a lot of work, that you've been working hard on this, and I appreciate the work. And this is, implementing this is going to be a big task. My understanding is that there's kind of three main prongs of this, and that's enforcement, education, and reporting and monitoring. And that's going to just, you know, just reading this, it seems like an overwhelming amount of work for the city staff as we are currently structured. So are there any possible ways that you can think of to offset some of the costs to the city? You know, with the presentation that we received earlier, it sounded like there might be the ability to work with the county and El Dorado Disposal to kind of tag-team some of these duties. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's correct. I think a lot of the monitoring will be done by El Dorado Disposal. They're going to be doing the monitoring. It will not be city staff dumpster diving, lifting up lids. All that will be done primarily by the driver that's actually out in the field. The responsibility then they will have will be to report to us. So we have the responsibility then of making sure we're getting the, the appropriate level of reporting and documentation of what's out there. And then finally, with enforcement, we're going to have to go after businesses that feel they don't need to comply if they're, if they didn't receive a waiver.
Right, and would that be our code enforcement officer?
Yes.
So, I mean, we worked to, you know, get, get that position up to a full-time position, largely to focus on vegetation management. And I can imagine this, just siphoning off those hours and diverting them to this program. Are we going to need to hire another code enforcement officer in order to keep up with this? And if so, how do we, is there any way to fund this within the, you know, within the agreements that we have with partnering agencies and fees and, I mean?
I think that's something that we're going to have to look at doing. Does the city apply a surcharge to our collection to pay for all the monitoring and the paperwork and the reporting we're going to have to do? And then enforcement, of course. Hopefully, if we do a diligent job enforcing, that would pay for itself with, with levying the fines.
Okay.
But that's a really good question. In fact, you know, the first thing I'd, I'd like to do, because just putting together the ordinance, and I want to, I want to thank our city attorney. She actually reviewed a number of, of other cities' ordinances and found one that was really suitable for, for us here, for, for the City of Placerville and our size. So, you know, we had a good model that we started with, so don't think this was done by scratch. It wasn't me that came up with a 5% insect habitat. So I think we're going to have to do some, some, basically, a review on how much time we're spending on the program. I mean, already a lot of time is being spent on this, and so it's probably developing a new, a new code when we track our hours of what we're doing, and then trying to extrapolate what we think we're gonna, we're gonna need when, by the time, especially when we get to 2024 and, and doing the enforcement. It will be time-consuming. And staff does appreciate the fact that the council saw the value in having a full-time code enforcement officer, and primarily what was driving that was our, trying to enforce our defensible space ordinance. That's a tremendous amount of time, but we're also seeing this huge spike that I've reported to the council in the past. We have a lot of illegal construction going on, and it's typical. It's not atypical. I've, I've been in this business long enough where I've seen it's cyclical. Every time the housing values go way up, there's flipping, there's illegal improvements and construction going on, but it's really a burden then on staff. So she, I mean, we really should have two full-time code... So she, I mean, we really should have two full-time code enforcement officers, but I am afraid that with this, we're certainly going to see the need for additional staffing. So we are going to have to look and find a way to fund it.
So one follow-up question. You know, in regards to the code enforcement officer, you mentioned that the fees from code enforcement would justify that position? Is that?
I think we just need to make sure that if, that, what we find currently with code enforcement is we spend an inordinate amount of time on a smaller number of people that just refuse to comply and we go round and round and they complain and it's very time-consuming. And so we are trying to be much better at actually applying the fines so that we can recover those costs because overall, it's not fair to all the other citizens that are fully complying and, but they're subsidizing these people on trying to bring them into compliance.
Okay. Thanks.
Just a quick follow-up to Kara's question and what you just stated about the fees. Isn't there a long time span once you even try to find these people? I mean, that it just goes on and on and on and that takes, again, more time, you know, and more, you know, of staff time, et cetera, in trying to fight the fight that this generates? Or, I mean, it's not something that you can just say, you, you know, you're guilty, you know, we're going to fine you $200 or $500. They're going to appeal it. So how long does that appeal go on then so that, you know?
You're talking about due process, basically.
I am talking about due, but it's more people, I mean, it's more staff time involved in trying to rectify this situation and it just goes on and on and on. And I'm not seeing that this is going to help.
It is. I would just add that it is time-consuming. It's administrative citations. It's not criminal. We're not charging with a misdemeanor. And so as the mayor pointed out, it's due process. And so we are referring to our, you know, under Title I, we have a whole administrative procedure and enforcement procedure and levying fines and how that all plays out. Staff would like to maybe revisit that section of our code and see if there's a way to streamline it or make it, make it a little bit more efficient. One thing that we've discussed is, is there certain categories of items, and I could see this falling into that, where staff would have the ability to actually issue a citation? Where you take, you take a picture of the violation, you issue the citation, you know, there's really no fight. How are you going to appeal something when, when you've got the photograph showing the violation? Signs are the clearest. You know, we have all kinds of sign veil violations throughout the city. They're just as time-consuming as somebody that builds a building that's, you know, out of compliance because you go through this long procedure where if we had the administrative citation that we can issue, take a picture of the violation, boom, it's done. We're right into finding the person. And so we'd like to look at doing that. I think that would save a lot of time, at least on very specific types of violations.
I think that might be a good idea to, you know, do that first and foremost. If all these, you know, these things keep coming up, that we're going to need more of that, you know. Thank you.
Boy. Is this, this seems like a very onerous ordinance. Is there, and I'm kind of looking at Mona a little bit, but is this a little over the top of an ordinance? Is there, can we do a light ordinance? I mean, are we hitting more of the points? Do we need to address the insects? Do we need to deal with all the mulch over and all these things? Is this all part of the law that we're required to follow? Or are we just trying to guess what they're going to do and we're putting it into an ordinance?
We're trying to do the bare minimum, believe it or not. This is something that I'm hearing in every single jurisdiction that's faced with this because the legislation is exceptionally onerous and no one wants to do anything beyond what they have to do just because this is an unfunded mandate that consumers are really having to pay for. Because what ends up happening is the administrative costs, the cost of putting these together, the cost of enforcement, the cost of designing a program that complies with this all get rolled into the rate increase. And the rate increase is then imposed on the users. And so every single jurisdiction that I have worked for and advised has been adamant to do only what we have to do for compliance. I know that there are some, they're in the minority jurisdictions that, you know, are adamant about going green and believe that this is warranted. They might add a couple of additional things, but, but I assure you that we are not doing anything above and beyond what is required.
So I can go out and steal $900 from a merchant, pay my fines, and I'll probably come out ahead?
She's not going to advise you.
Just things are ass-backwards in this. I'm sorry. This just, it's just ridiculous that this, I'm going to, I'm not going to go on a rant because you all know where I'm going with that and I don't even want to go down that road because it's a waste of time in this, in this state. But that's all I got to say. Let's go ahead and open this up for public comment.
This one is pretty wild. The thing that I think they, the one thing you want to do is that the residential waste, green waste, it has a green lid, but the dry recyclables have a yellow lid for all the residential properties. The blue recycled ones are like downtown in the, in the larger dumpsters and stuff, but for residential, the recycles, they're dry, have a yellow lid. So I don't know if you need to add that somewhere. But the other concern I have is the idea of mulch. It depends on the type of mulch because you can run into troubles making your property less fire-safe depending on the type of mulch you use. Because a lot of the mulches are very flammable. So, you know, you don't want that right next to your house. So making this also work with, with being fire-safe and fire-resistant needs to happen. And that's, that could be a problem. If you're requiring everybody to mulch everything, you could run into problems with having it then not be fire-safe. So that's all.
Thank you, Sue. All right. Anything, anybody else for a public comment? All right. Are we going to have to have a replacement program for our mulch? Because you know mulch eventually goes away. Is that part of the ordinance too?
I think the addition of the mulch, again, is to, I think the state is trying to create a market for something. And as the last speaker mentioned, you know, we have this potential conflict with our, with our defensible space ordinance. Well, I think in that ordinance, you're allowed to have mulch, I think it's to three inches, and I think this code also specifies at three inches. So as long as it doesn't get above that, then it's not considered a fire hazard under our, under our fire-safe regulations as well. So they're consistent, but that is a concern. And typically, within five feet of your home, you don't want any kind of flammable anything.
All right. Thank you.
Actually, I've got one more question about this mulch, mulch issue. So say hypothetically, somebody, you know, what is considered a landscape installation? You know, if someone has an acre and they have a nice landscape around their house, but the rest is just, you know, native grasses, are they saying that they have to mulch their entire property except for 5% for insects?
I wouldn't think so. I think if it's basically, I wouldn't consider that landscaped. I would consider that just manicured natural landscape as opposed to unnatural where you're actually going in there, you've removed, you're putting in landscaping bushes and shrubs, exotics, things like that.
Okay.
But that's a good question and that's clarification we're going to have to get with CalRecycle. Yeah, mind you, this is, was stated earlier, very onerous. So there's a big learning curve on all of us to really determine exactly what it is the state is looking for. So we'll get a lot of clarification. I think when we develop our implementing procedures, you know, just the staff is the how-to, I think we'll look to better answering those questions because we're going to have the public coming near the public counter asking those same questions. We want to be able to adequately state that, yes, you comply or this is what you need to do. But I think the whole thing is trying to generate a market for mulch.
Yeah.
So it doesn't just pile up somewhere.
Which I understand need a market for these materials, but forcing people to buy it if that's not in their home plans is, that's a different thing.
Yeah, and that's a good question. As I stated earlier, I don't know how we're going to enforce it on a single-family home that may have greater than 500 square feet of landscaping, yet we don't have discretion to review their landscaping. So it would only be those where there's some discretion. We'll have to look at that.
Interesting.
All right. Patty?
So along those lines, I learned through the Fire Safe Council that there is an awful lot of mulch being generated and they're running out, they can't sell it anymore. They can't get rid of it. There's too much. So.
Literally up by Ice House, there are mountains and mountains of mulch.
Exactly. We've got too much mulch now because of all the downed trees.
Yeah.
So they need to start giving it away for free.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much for those. Anybody?
I'll just echo more to the point, this frustration of this unfunded state mandate that's being forced upon us that our staff will now have to undertake, that will take them away from other things that we're trying to do already on a skeleton crew. It's just really frustrating.
And possibly cause us to have to raise rates to, you know, have this program paid for.
Yep.
Can we, I mean, is there any potential for city governments and county governments to petition the state to include some funding in the budget? So, you know, I mean, they've got a surplus to help assist in implementing this? Is that something that's been discussed?
I think that's a really good question. I have not seen anything through, you know, League of California State or anything like that, but maybe Mr. Morris can shed some light. I don't know. Maybe he's seen something out there.
I, I real, what I've seen from the state is that they expect us just to fund this through user fees.
Just suck it up, huh?
Okay.
Yeah.
Like everything else.
Right, Pierre, get to it.
I'm on it. I have my favorite bugs.
Did I?
Do you need the question about lid colors answered? It's not, not a big deal, but.
Go ahead, please.
Maybe Ross can do that better than me, but we have to go to the blue lids, but they have like 20 years to do it or something like that.
2036, I believe.
2036 to get there, so.
Yeah, I think the lids have to be changed, but not the body of the bin.
Right.
That's correct. So the lid colors, it's a long transitional process. You'll see a lot of yellow out there, but yellow's going away. So everything we deliver, starting January 1st, 2022, must be blue. So we've trying to, we're trying to get rid of the inventory of yellow we have and we're ordering all blue going forward. So that's why you will see blue in some places and yellow in others, but over time, yellow will disappear and by 2036, everything has to be blue.
That just doesn't make sense.
So we're producing more plastic in our environmentally safe state.
Hopefully it's recycled plastic. All right. This is getting crazy. So if we, if we have no further discussion, no changes to the ordinance?
I will, well, one, I'll make a comment that I will volunteer, even though it's outside the city, to monitor Shorty's and Krista Campbell's property at the end of the day to see if there's any donuts left. Beyond that.
Will you bring it to us?
Yes, and I will happily share and ensure that we hit those mandates there. With that, I will make a motion to waive the full reading, adopt the ordinance as recommended and waive the, waive the full reading.
Introduce, rather than.
Or introduce, excuse me.
I'll second that.
All right. We got a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Oh, actually, just to clarify, do we also need to direct the proposed ordinance to be on the December 14th?
We always do that. That was in this language, but yeah, it will be.
All right. Just to make sure staff complies because we may just, we may forget.
You are hereby directed after we do this. So any further discussion? See you in a minute. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Sargosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right. We are having so much fun tonight. All right, moving on. Let me get to item 10.2. Introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Title IX of Placerville municipal code traffic. Chapter three, stopping, standing, and parking. The affected sections include section three, restricted parking zones designated, section eight restricting parking, and section 14, no parking in designated bicycle lanes. And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Neves.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Although this item in ordinance is quite a bit more boring than the last one, this item introduces some minor yet necessary changes to the city's parking ordinances located in Title IX. Chapter three addresses stopping, standing, and parking within existing traffic ordinance, and the proposed revisions apply to specifically, as you mentioned, sections three, eight, and 14 of that chapter. The most notable change is the definition establishment of a commercial loading zone. This modification was initiated by repeated misuse of the loading parking stall located on the northeasterly side of the bell tower. The purpose of this stall is actually to serve as a loading and unloading space to support the Main Street merchants and businesses and restaurants amidst the constricted roadway space. However, it has been repeatedly witnessed that this stall is being used as a regular parking stall. The commercial loading zone definition provided in the draft ordinance and council's agenda allows for commercial vehicles as defined by the California Vehicle Code and limits the use to support loading and unloading of freight, goods, wares, or merchandise only for a period not to exceed 20 minutes. The other notable change to the parking ordinance is the restriction of parking in designated bike lanes. This becomes a safety hazard when vehicles park in bike lanes, forcing cyclists to merge into traffic and potential conflict with both the active traffic as well as the parked vehicle. As Placerville continues to improve its active transportation network with bike lanes, trails, and sidewalks, this concern will continue if it's not addressed as early as possible. This revision is a proactive step to avoiding future public safety concerns. Additional parking restrictions are also included for Forni Road and Molten Drive for visibility and safety reasons. That concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there going to be additional signage at the bell tower or something different? Or is the signage there adequate? We just need to enforce it?
It's adequate at the time, right now. It just needs to be enforced, to be honest. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further questions?
I have a question. It doesn't pertain to this particular wording, but it's about the proposed, about the parking. And I, and I apologize if I didn't understand in the first place, but I have an issue on Manor Drive where I live and I brought it up a couple of times and I was told that you were going to be addressing the parking and that I should present it then. And so every time somebody has a problem, do we have to do an ordinance? Or can you guys, can you guys come and make an inspection? You guys, our staff, come and make an inspection and see, I mean, how does that work? Should I propose it tonight to go along with this? Or, I don't want to wait another year or however long it takes to get this issue addressed. And I'm sure there's other people in Placerville like me that probably have an issue and are not sure how, what to do.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Borelli, it's that you're wanting some clarification on the process on how our parking ordinance gets revised and how do you, do you get something in the queue? Am I hearing you correctly?
Well, how, yeah, I want to, I want to tell you my situation and I want somebody to come and tell me whether, you know, something can be done about it or not. I think it's a dangerous situation that's going on. I'll put it that way. I think it's a dangerous situation that's going on, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
And it's because of parking. But there's no restrictions. I live on a road that doesn't even have a white line down it, so, you know, it's, and I, I know there's a lot of those roads around here. So it's really difficult. So, yes, I'm asking, what do we do?
Well, so what would happen typically when these parking revisions come up? We try to wait until we have, you know, several of them stacked up, and this happened to be one of those incidences. Regarding Manor Drive, I think that the easiest way for us to get something like that implemented is just, let's, you know, submit a request. I believe that this comment will constitute an action item for staff to go back and look at it, and then we can take a look at it, and we can follow up with you, as well as if there's any other parking concerns. We pretty much have an open-door policy to receiving any kind of public comment or input on any kind of parking issues that come up, because we do have, as you mentioned, those precarious roads that are just a little narrow for, you know, even for two-way traffic in some instances, right? So if, if that is acceptable, maybe that'd be the course of action for addressing your concern directly to Manor.
I'm, I'm, I'm open to anything, but I just, I want to be sure that I, if, you know, if it needs to be included with what we're doing tonight, or are you going to do a separate one every time somebody has a complaint?
What we may want to do tonight, if it's the direction of council, is delay introduction of this ordinance tonight in order to go back and review this particular issue on Manor Drive. And if any other councilmembers want to bring up any others, we, we can look at those two and then bring it back at the December 14th meeting. But that's up to you, what direction you want to provide. Otherwise, we wouldn't want to, I don't think we want to turn around and revise the ordinance again in January, obviously. That's, it takes a lot of work to do that. It doesn't make sense. So if the council wants us to look at this particular incident, Manor Drive, I would recommend that we delay introduction of the ordinance tonight. Allow us to take a look at that, see if there is something that needs to be done there, and then bring it back.
Didn't we have, I'm trying to remember, I know we did, like, it was sometime last year, I believe, that on some of these streets, I don't know if Manor was one of them, but we were going to do signage for, like, no street parking, and I don't know how far we've, like, I know Green Street was on there, but we haven't done those, those signs yet. And I don't, that may solve some of this, if, it just may be in queue because, for a variety of reasons.
Yeah, it still needs to be listed in the ordinance if we're even to sign it, so.
But I remember what Michael's talking about. There was quite a lengthy list.
Yeah, we had gone back, and then we had, we had, I think, submitted other streets, and we had gotten some public feedback, I think, like, behind Placerville Glass, and there was, I'm trying to think of a few others that were on that list. Nick, I don't know if you have any, I, I'm trying to remember, it was, I think it was last year that we had that.
There's, there's actually been a lot of them. I'd have to review my records. Councilmember Borelli, I remember that there was a small section that we painted at the bottom of Manor, right at the, the intersection and tunnel, but I think you're referring to up farther around the curve, kind of where the apartments are at. Yeah, if, if those are added to the section, we have no issue with.
And the only reason I, I'm bringing it up, there's, there's all these apartments up there, and the folks just don't have any place to park, so they're parking on the street, and it's on a dangerous curve. So that's why I'm bringing it up.
Understand.
And when we return, or if we return and we don't move forward with this ordinance, and we determine that, you know, it, you know, it's warranted or not warranted, you know, we can add it in at that time. And if we are returning, then I do encourage to flesh out any other parking revisions we have now. If it's not warranted, then what you'll see is this exact same staff report and ordinance in that meeting.
So maybe it's just going back and looking at, at what we, those, those streets we designated last year and marrying them up to this, if, if that works.
Can we, how critical is this? Because we have a staff report, we have the time invested, we're ready to go. Is this something that we can put into the next queue? Or do you want to put the brakes on this?
I'm just daylighting it because I think there's other people in, like, Michael was saying, Green Street, and nothing's been done.
Right.
So how, why are?
You know, I, you know, in a small town like this, I can go around, I can go my street, go Green Street, I can go.
I agree.
We go Chamberlain, we could go Turner.
And I agree.
Turner's actually, so where do we draw the line?
Right, exactly. That's why, that's kind of what I'm getting at. So do we just let it go until somebody whacks somebody, you know, or I get smashed? I, I don't, that's what I don't want it to happen. And we have a lot of people that live up on Manor Drive. It's all, it's Apartment Hill. And I just, I, I think the, you know, I, I.
I think it's part of living in a somewhat.
Or put a sign up, I don't care.
What is it, an urban, rural interface?
Yeah.
Rural, I don't know.
And I quite frankly think a sign would do it, you know, maybe, you know, just to limit it, you know, that.
What process do we have to go through to, to do, to evaluate a street and then prepare to?
Well, I mean, to be honest, you're kind of already in it, because, so, something that happens for us on an internal level after a city council meeting is we all get assigned to-do lists. We have our action items after city council meeting. And just this discussion would be then daylighted as a city staff action item to follow up on.
Okay, a question. So I, I don't, I'm not familiar with the situation on Manor, but it sounds like you two have had, and I don't know if this is the place to really discuss it since it's not on the agenda right now, but it sounds like you two have had, do you, do you know what Patty's talking about?
I vaguely remember it being mentioned, but I know I have not gone up there and looked at it recently. There's been a couple of things that, to, to be honest, there's been a few things that have been brought up about Manor over the years.
Okay.
And so, you know, whenever Councilwoman Borelli brings them up, I look into them individually. There was, I believe there was a sewer and a water concern at one point that we looked into, and so.
Well, for the longest time, Manor Drive was not considered, it wasn't, it was supposedly not a city street, and then it was discovered that it is.
Right. That was part of that, I remember that discussion, too.
Exactly.
Right. But I don't specifically remember the parking discussion.
Nick knows what I'm talking about.
So Rebecca, would, I mean, is this ordinance time-sensitive for one? And two, would it be a lot of extra work to evaluate the situation on Manor and add, you know, one more section to this if we brought it back?
Time, so to answer your first question on time sensitivity, the, the delay just comes in the manner of enforcement. So, you know, until this gets codified, folks are going to be continuing to park in bike lanes.
Okay.
They're going to be continuing to, you know, that, there's a burgundy SUV that just decides to make that stop right there at Placerville News and just uses it like clockwork. So, I mean, that guy's going to keep doing that. So there's a couple of things like that that have come up. And then, you know, obviously, it's not just my department that's impacted by, I'm, I mean, truth be told, I'm just really the nerd. I just write the stuff. But the, the folks that are dramatically affected are the Police Department for Enforcement and Public Works for signage and striping. And so just being sensitive to that time.
Yeah, and the merchants downtown that have to fight to get their products delivered.
Correct, and that is a regular occurrence.
Yeah.
And, and I agree, it's much more, yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to find out, though, like I say, should, can, how do people go about, you know, requesting this, and do we have to do, it's a lot of work for you guys to do these ordinances, I realize that, and I'd just like to get in as many as we can.
Well, so there's a couple ways that they can request. There's the 3-1-1 system. Anything related to streets, we get copies of. It goes to Public Works, it goes to Engineering, and that can be considered a public request, and we can look into it. The other is, you know, by having this dialogue here, or if there's a public comment, like I mentioned, it does get added into our action items, or at least to follow up on, right? The other is, we have our main engineering at cityofplacerville.org email address that if somebody has a parking concern, by all means, shoot it to us, and we will take a look at it. So, you know, we, we are constantly updating this ordinance for one reason or another, mostly, more recently, it's been related to speed limit updates, because we've, you know, hit our, our expiration date on a lot of roads for speed enforcement. So we've been going through and updating our speed surveys to support PD for enforcement.
Okay. I'll call 3-1-1.
Thank you, Patty. I understand your concern. I have similar concerns on the street that I live on, and, but at the same time, I don't want to see a bunch of stops, or a bunch of signs all up and down the road.
The street that everyone drives the wrong way on.
Yeah, well, that one, too. Not me. All the time. So, yes, I would, I would recommend that we move forward with this one, and then queue that one up for the next round, and I'm sure that'll be coming around the corner not too far from now. Any, for?
And in the meantime, I welcome the, the public, and I welcome council, too. If you have, if you see something that needs to be addressed, you know, we have an open communication policy, for sure, let me know.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? We can get a motion, then.
Do we open?
I did do public comment, nobody commented.
Oh, yeah.
I think you did.
Yeah.
I did.
Okay.
That's one for me. Motion, please, if anybody wants to.
I'll move that we introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, amending Title IX of the Municipal Code Traffic, Chapter three, stopping, standing, and parking.
All right, second. Thank you. And roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, thank you.
All right, moving on to item 12.1. Wait, wait, item 11, we have no public hearing, so item 12. Discussion action items. Receive and file memorandum addressed to the Eldorado County Board Supervisors from Don Simone, Director of Health and Human Services, regarding the sheriff's proposed homeless encampment project and provide direction to staff. I sat through about two-thirds of this meeting today, and I want to thank the, the very strenuous deliberation that went on, the significant public comment, a lot of passion, and I think everybody, I think it was pretty well said in the room that everybody cares to, to move this item forward and figure out how to do it, and we just can't figure out how to, how to work together to get it over the finish line. And I, hopefully, we're moving in that direction. I don't know that the letter has as much significance now as it did when it was drafted. However, I do know that we have Supervisor Thomas out here that was very instrumental in one drafting the, drafting the, the motion and kind of corralling, corralling all those thoughts together to move it forward. Is it possible for you to kind of describe to us where you're at with that? I don't, I know that not all of us watched it today.
I watched the whole thing.
Did you? Wow, impressive. Okay, could you, is that a possibility? Do you mind, Cleef? All right, please.
Good evening, Placerville City Council and staff. Always good to be with you, and thank you for the, the lead-up. It was a very interesting day, and like you said, it was really democracy in action, where there was a lot of rigorous debate and comment and dialogue, and that is what we should be doing as we wrestle with really difficult issues at our local government level. I think there was, I think it was really important to recognize that, you know, we need to applaud creative, out-of-the-box thinking. And I really thank the Sheriff's Department for bringing this forward. Like I said, he, he got us off our duff, because I think it's, this is a hard issue. There's never going to be a perfect solution, and that was certainly recognized today at the, at the board level. And so we really dug into this concept of, of funding, because that really was key to the discussion today. We have worked so hard to be compliant with our COC. We've worked for seven or eight years on that, and we now stand at the threshold of really being able to move some of these solutions forward that we've been talking about for years, that can help impact not only our homeless neighbors and residents, but also our business and our residents in helping mitigate some of the challenges that you talked about earlier today. And so we're on the precipice of that. And the consensus was that we cannot do anything that will jeopardize that funding that we have worked so very hard for. And when it finally came back to the board for deliberation, the, the point I got, I brought forward is that it was time for the board to do our job, and really, today was a defining moment, where finally, the Board of Supervisors took decisive action in working toward a goal. We've been dancing around it for a long time, and, like I said, today was a defining moment. And as we looked toward our, toward making that policy decision, we, we, I drafted a few key components that we recognized were really important to address and resolve in any solution that moves forward. And so I'd like to briefly reiterate that list, that we need to resolve the illegal camping issue. We need to protect our businesses and our residential community and support humane living conditions with a goal of lifting people out of homelessness. We need to address the fire danger associated with being unhoused. We need to be compliant with federal and state regulations and funding in whatever we bring forward. We need to finish our homeless strategic plan, including the community outreach and final plan adoption, and we're close on that. We're about a month or two away from that. We need to work cooperatively with the City of Placerville, who often bears the brunt of this issue. We recognize that. We need a compliant program in place before next winter, and we need to recognize that we'll, there will never be a one-size-fits-all solution, but to make sure that perfection is not the enemy of good. And so with that, let me get this right, in a unanimous decision, I might add, the Board of Directors directed our Health and Human Services staff to work through the COC, the Continuum of Care, to, number one, assess potential sites for a congregate navigation shelter with an emergency, emergency shelter component, or a pilot community run by a professional service provider, and two, return to the board with recommendations on funding sources, purchase versus leasing options, and program details. So that was the action the board took today. And like I said, that is a significant step forward. And I think, before I leave you to your, your conversation, I think it's important to understand what a navigation, sorry, center is, navigation center, that's sometimes hard to say. Navigation centers are designed to address the shortcomings and problems of the old shelter system. I think that's really important to understand. They, this is a key component. Access is determined on a case-by-case basis through a coordinated entry system, which we have in place in Eldorado County. A navigation center does not have people lined up down the street, there aren't drop-ins, you aren't, you know, in by eight, out by eight. It's not that kind of thing. It provides intensive case management to connect people with services and housing, and the goal is to link clients with permanent housing and not stay there forever. And so that is what the board directed our staff to pursue. So I'm happy to answer any quest, oh, and the timing on this, we asked the board, or the Health and Human Services Director and our staff to bring this back to the board by February of next year for an update, you know, moving closer to that goal. So if I can answer any questions, I am happy to do that.
Any, any questions at this time?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, thank you, Wendy, for being here after a long meeting.
My pleasure.
I, I watched the first hour of, of this debate and discussion, and then I had to jump into a, a different meeting, so I didn't get to see, you know, a lot of the deliberation. So a couple, a couple questions I have. In February, is it expected that the Director of Health and Human Services will have a site picked out?
Potentially. I don't know. Potentially. We've, we've directed him to assess, you know, specific sites. And so I expect him perhaps to come back with a couple of options. So I think we'll be closer to that, and by that time, the, the strategic goal will be, will be finalized. So we'll be, we're running on concurrent pass. What, what we didn't want to happen is, you know, we've been waiting for the strategic plan forever, and didn't want that to finally finish, and then maybe then to start this next step, but we're working on concurrent pass now. And so I, we expect, you know, to have some sites identified at that point.
Okay. And a couple more questions, and I don't mean to be critical here, but I believe that there was a past agenda item with the city and the county where the county was going to identify sites, and we've never seen those sites.
I don't know what they are either.
So is it going to be different this time? So, is it going to be different this time?
Yeah, I don't know what they are either, but the board directed them to assess sites and to bring that back with a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, I'll see what other questions they have. Okay, I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Jackie.
So, thank you Supervisor for being with us here tonight and for the deliberations. It's good to see a 5-0 vote, I thought, on this as well, so.
I was encouraged by that, too.
I thought that was very important as a unified body to move that conversation forward. Just a couple of questions. Does the county anticipate any additional revenues from this current budget that would go towards these efforts? And then, is the current where the sheriff had proposed, is that also going to be part of a potential site still, or is that location sort of off the table?
The sheriff has a voice and has a representative on the Continuum of Care, and so, all of the conversations and deliberations will go through the Continuum of Care, and so, that is what we directed our staff to pursue at this point, and so, those discussions will be had at that level. We didn't necessarily say that we're going to stand up a program, you know, we didn't direct staff to work with the sheriff's program. The staff is working through the COC, and the sheriff has a seat at that table, so all the conversations will be had there, so we don't have conversations in different siloed efforts, it's channeled through the COC in which is compliant with funding. That's really important to keep those together.
Got you, and do you know if there's going to be any additional funding coming through from the state?
We do expect additional monies next year, I don't have the details on that, but, and that's exactly why the board also directed staff to come back with potential funding sources, for, we want to make sure that whatever plan we bring forward and deliberate on together is sustainable.
Right. Well, and I think that's the other part that I like about the navigation center, is that it is sustainable, but it's also not in perpetuity.
Right.
And I think that's something that, at least from my perspective, I have not wanted to see, because the whole goal is to get people out of homelessness, not to create a homeless shelter in perpetuity, so.
Where we create additional impacts.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I want to echo what Kara said about these location sites, it feels like the county's not being transparent. We'd just like a list of those sites.
And that's, I do too, and that's exactly why we specifically directed the board to come back, the staff to come back with sites for us to look at, deliberate on, and talk about together.
Okay.
I agree with you.
Okay, and then I just kind of want to share with everyone who didn't watch the whole meeting, the COC basically was asking, they're having a meeting on Monday, November 15th, to talk about these temporary solutions, and so they were asking for the opportunity to have that conversation before we have any more elaborate conversations about the sheriff's plan or anything like that, so that we're all kind of talking the same language rather than different silos.
Yeah, I do want to be clear about that, that the board is not moving forward with the hostess plan as proposed by the sheriff's department.
Just one more comment. It was really encouraging to see, I think this was the first time that I've seen just general broad support for doing something, so that was encouraging and hopeful, and I do hope that we actually see sites, and that this long-awaited strategic plan is actually really close to being complete, because, you know, in the first hour that I was listening, it was clear that I'm not the only one that's growing impatient with the strategic planning process. I think that that is widespread, so it's time that gets wrapped up, it's urgently needed, so I, this is encouraging, I was happy to see the support on the Board of Supervisors to make bold action, and I just hope that we can actually get something done in the very near future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a comment in that the six sites that they talked about, that nobody knows about yet, I don't think they, personally, I don't believe that they want to put them out there, because the minute you put them out there, the whole county will explode, and everybody will say, "Not in my backyard," and it'll turn into a big mess without having the foundation around what would actually go in any one of those sites and how it would be developed, and without the strategic plan, it's kind of pointless to put out six sites without having the back, the foundation to support how, what they would be used for and all the details surrounding that, and I just, and there's no political will in any one of the districts to really stand up and say, "We want that in our backyard."
Agreed, I think that's why I have advocated for an equal spread of the problem and not locating it all in one place and having one part of the population in this county take the brunt of all the problems that go along with that.
And they're actually doing that, and I think in the city of Sacramento, they are actually getting each one of the districts to locate some of their facilities, so we'll see how that turns out down there.
I was just going to say, they're not having a whole lot of luck.
Imagine that, somebody struggling with this program, yes.
Yeah, you know, the hostess program just kind of came at us, and we didn't have a whole lot of time to review it, and I don't want the same thing to happen with the potential sites, that we only get to hear about them a day or two before we have to start making decisions, and so that's why I'm just really stressing that transparency. Thank you.
I truly feel this will be a different process, it's working through the COC, everyone's at the table, this is a defined process forward, where the board has made a policy decision. I truly feel that we are in a point that we've never been before, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Cleve, did you, there was a lot there, did you have anything to add to the conversation?
No, I don't think so, I think you've covered pretty much what we heard today. Again, I just, the same thing, I, hopefully we can move forward with something.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment at this time, if anybody wishes to comment. To, not to put a fine point on it, but most of us listen to the public comment, most of us listen to the public comment that went on at the supervisors, and so we have a good sense of the feel there too as well. Sue, welcome back.
Good evening.
Yes.
Mayor and council and staff, and thank you, Wendy. I've been waiting for something to happen for several, several years now, and I'm glad to see something may happen. It does not solve the problem this year, it does not solve the fact that we have people out in the rain right now, or last weekend, or through the middle of this winter, through Christmas, when we definitely will have some weather, and we will have some more rain, and we will possibly have snow. Is there anything that we can do on a temporary basis? I know the armory has been vacant for what, two, three years now? Ever since the Boys and Girls Clubs moved out, it's sat there vacant. It has showers, has bathrooms, it has room to put about 50 people in it, and that would at least get some people out of the weather. I know that its long-term purpose is to be for low-income housing for that area. That's fine, but that'll take two or three years to happen too. So, in the meantime, is there something that we can do to provide our homeless a place to be through this winter, and possibly next winter? I mean, we're not even going to have the beginnings feedback from the COC until February. So, that's quite a ways to suffer in the cold if you don't have any shelter, and it seems to me that we could do something in the meantime for this winter, instead of having it be just like last winter, where we had people die on the street because they had no shelter. So, that would be my thing, would be to investigate if it's possible to use things that are empty. The juvenile center is empty, it has 36 beds. We're not allowed to use it for the homeless? Why not? Why can't we put, and that has showers and facilities for people, and so does the armory? Why can't we use those places on a temporary basis? When we issue temporary use permits for things, why can't we use a temporary use for those? So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Sue.
Jane McGinnis in complete agreement with Sue Rodman. If there is a reason why we can't use one of those two facilities, could somebody please tell us what it is? Because both Sue and I have been sitting here for a long time, asking that same question of each other, and we don't know how to answer it. The churches, three of them have stepped up for the Housing Eldorado Program. You're not going to find homeless people that are willing to leave their camp three times during the week to be sheltered and then go back to the camp for the other four nights. If they did that, they'd have to take everything they own out of the camp to avoid it being stolen while they're gone, and if they take everything out of the camp, they've given up their place in the camp, and quite often, the place where their tent is positioned is uniquely valuable to them, and they will find it taken when they get back. If we could move the homeless, allow them into the armory or into the juvenile hall facility, which would be perfect, either one, the churches will provide the volunteers, the people who will stay overnight with the facility, the people who will come in during the day and run programs, they would love not to have to provide the sleeping space. It's difficult for them, but they've got a lot of volunteers that are willing to be the bodies on the ground in that program, they just need a location. So, if that could be done, that would be wonderful. The other thing I wanted to say is, I wanted to thank Wendy so much, she has been so good to work with and so helpful. The hostess program has to go away. The sheriff has been talking to Charlie McDonald for the last month, and they discarded it weeks ago, but nobody knew it because they didn't tell anybody, and it's what we were talking about two, three meetings ago. No one's talking to anyone else, and nobody knows what's going on. If they were to move forward with something, what the sheriff is interested in now are the little pallet homes, and if they find a way to do that in a way that satisfies Housing First, then it doesn't endanger any kind of funding, but they're not really that familiar with the Housing First principles, so I love the idea of having professional shelter provider involved in whatever we do. Basically, I'm looking to see what the strategic plan comes up with, but our emergency now is, for the next three to four months, if we could use a building, we can have the bodies there necessary to run the program without having to involve the city, okay? But we need a location, so I just put that out there for you and hope that you will be able to act on it, because we desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Good evening, thank you for your listening hearts and ears. I have 10 pages here about the pallet. The word pallet throws us, we think of wooden pallets. These are, they have 60 square feet, personal climate control with heat and air conditioning, electricity and lights, locking mattresses and bedding, storage space. There's 10-page color extract of this, if I give this to Regina, can I please?
Stop, can you make copies for the board and for please, and can I get it back?
We'll pass it through and take a look at it real quick.
So, I read from First Kings, which is exciting about Elijah with the prophets of Baal and the still, small voice and the ravens bringing food to him, but the beginning of First Kings has Solomon with two mothers, and both babies have died, and they're newborns, and the mothers are fighting over, saying, "It's my baby that lived." No, it's yours died, mine lived, and so King Solomon, in First Kings, Chapter Three, verse 10 and 11, he says, "Bring me a sword, cut the baby in half, and give half to each of the mothers." You know the rest of the story, that one mother said, "Give me half," but the real mother said, "No, let her have the baby, I want the baby to live." We have a short-term emergency crisis, and we have a longer-term goal. There's two different things. This was wonderful progress, Wendy, thank you for being here, and thank you all for listening, and I can't believe I haven't used up two minutes yet, somebody say, "Amen."
Amen.
I just wish I was a weeping prophet, I weep sometimes, but I don't weep at the podium, and it's deplorable, and pray for me that my heart is more broken for the lost that are out there. Seriously, serious as a resurrection, not a heart attack. And I pray, I just, Father, I pray for your wisdom to speak to all of us, that you love each one of us, you have blessed us with families, with loved ones, with sanity, with prosperity, with success. Every person in here has worked hard, Lord. Lord, I ask you to put the pieces together as only you can do for the immediate need, move on our hearts. We believe that there is a way to shelter those who have no shelter in the rain and the coming snow, we pray that none of them would die, and we pray that you would move us to immediate answer for shelter and help us with the longer-term goal for an year-round shelter, and we give you the praise, Father God, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Jonathan. Turned off the wrong one. Seeing that everybody in the audience has spoke, or almost everybody, we'll bring it back to, anybody else would like to speak on this item? All right, this is a, we'll bring it back, we'll close public comment, bring it back, this is a discussion item only, there's no expectation of a motion that I'm aware of. So, is there, is there any direction, or is this more of a wait-and-see from everybody's perspective? Where?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to have a meeting Monday where I think there's going to be a lot of conversations that take place, I think it's hard for us to give direction before some of those conversations take place, and we kind of see what the options are, what they come up with.
I think it's going to be February before it really.
It might be.
Yeah.
But because of the Caldo Fire, all these conversations didn't happen, so now they're just starting to happen, and at least it's moving forward.
Sue, could I ask somebody to tell us about juvenile, the old juvenile hall and the other building that they're talking about? Is it available, are either one of them available, or is there a reason that we can't even consider it?
Juvenile Hall, Chief Cordero just informed me, and I was not aware of this, I know there was another issue, I believe, with juvenile hall, that, an agreement that they have with the courts, I believe it is? They, Corrections, is that who it is?
The courts.
The courts, yeah, okay. Determined, has a clause in their agreement that they can say who can be in there, below them in juvenile hall, and I know when it was discussed before, as far as using it for homeless, that the courts denied it and said, "No," that they wouldn't allow that in there.
So, it already has been presented to them?
It's been, yes, mentioned. Chief Cordero just informed me, though, however, currently, there is a Cal Fire hand crew that is being stationed in there that's using that facility, that they have, I guess, a contract with to use that or whatever, so that's currently using it for that.
The armory?
Let me just say, in terms of the armory, as you know, the state awarded a proposal to, what's their name, Pierre, again?
Jamburi.
Jamburi Housing, thank you, I couldn't think of it, Jamburi Housing, and they have begun process of developing plans to develop that into affordable housing, which means that facility would be torn down when the affordable housing, or workforce housing is what they're calling it, I believe, would be built there. I will tell you that staff has reached out to the state at this time to explore if it would be an option on a temporary basis to look at that facility.
Okay.
So, we're in that process.
I can only imagine, when the lawyers get done reviewing contracts and negotiating the process to relinquish it for a short period of time. the process to relinquish it for a short period of time and then getting the proper insurance and all the processes in place to use it, it could be a while.
It, it could be, but we, let's just say, we've initiated that process.
Yep, so, we'll have to see. I don't want to put, get unmet expectations here.
Right, understand.
But I just, I agree that it's a, we need to at least ask the question, see where, see where it leads us, and keep going in that direction until it doesn't make sense any longer. So, with that, I do, okay, I, we'll go ahead and close this item unless there's any further discussion. All right. Supervisor Thomas, thank you very much for taking your time out of your evening and, yeah, coming right from your supervisor's meeting all day long to pop over here to help us kind of talk through this. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And so, we're going to bring this back, and we're going to move on to Item 13, Council Report for Other Agency Meetings, Eldorado Transit Authority.
Transit Authority, we did not have an action item on the last meeting, but we did discuss the commuter routes and ridership in the post-COVID world and kind of had a little analysis about where we're at.
That has to be a fascinating discussion because of the microbuses or trying to reduce the, the big vehicles to smaller and the ridership and everything else that.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's interesting because the way people work and commute to work is not coming back.
Right. Whole pattern's changing.
Yeah, so it's, you know, society has just really made big changes, and it's definitely affecting ridership, so.
More to come, I imagine.
Yeah.
All right. Transportation Commission.
We accepted the final study of the Eldorado Hills Business Park. We accepted the zero emission bus conversion plan, and we ratified a stakeholder advisory committee for the American River Confluence Study.
All right. LAFCO?
LAFCO, we adopted a recommendation for our EO recruitment and appointed membership to a few committees.
All right, thanks. CICOG?
Uh, CICOG and Pioneer, we'll, we meet on the 18th, I believe.
All right, thank you. And Fire Safety Council, Patty?
I don't have a report. They didn't send me the minutes.
All right.
There has been a change in officers, and so, they're doing, and they're really, they're redoing their bylaws and, again, stressing, you know, going after whatever we can, and they're also planning fundraisers to help them out to achieve some of their goals.
Okay. And we have a new member on the Fire Safety Council.
Oh, no, she's been a member.
Oh, have you been a member for a while?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I thought, I heard it was a new membership.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Patty. And? Mayor? Yes?
At, at one of my meetings with a couple of you this week, it was requested that, and I'm going to look at Jackie when I say this, but that perhaps we add to this list, the C O C, to get reports back. Does the council want to do that? Do you want us to add that to that?
I, I would like that. I mean, I think that this is a very relevant, you know, issue to the city.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll add that to the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
All right. And any requests or future agenda items? All right, seeing none. City Managers and Staffs Report. Do you have anything?
Nothing, nothing for me other than.
All right. Received File, October 2021 Police Report and Statistics. Was there any questions? There was a increase in, I got to bring it up again, there was an increase in felonies, is that what I recall?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, quite a bit.
And is that anything of particular?
On the arrest comparisons?
Increase in what, Kara?
Felonies.
Oh, felonies.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm showing, same, same as 2020 of October.
But a huge increase from 2019, or significant?
Yeah, active officers out there getting after it. You know, we, you know, every month, we, we provide this statistics, and you can see the increase, and, and it's not germane to our area, it's statewide, everybody's experiencing the increase. But we're still an extremely safe community. If we had an increase in crime and there was no arrests associated with it, it means we're not out there actually doing our job. So, if, if you see that uptick in criminal activity, you're going to see the uptick in, in arrests as well because, you know, quite honestly, our officers are extremely motivated. They're out there doing the very best they can to protect the community, and, and that shows in their arrests and some of the statistics that we're able to present each month.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? I really appreciate you pulling this report and putting it together. It's, it really highlights the activity. Often, police and fire go unnoticed in their activity and what they do, and people don't. I know when I was on the fire board, it was, it was, it was always difficult to get the, to pull the information. It wasn't difficult, it was provided, but to actually, I think we started doing more significant reports to see what they're actually doing because our community, you know, I just don't, it happens behind the scenes. You know, firefighters and police officers like to do their job and not be on the front page of the newspaper, but to actually, and I mean that in, in the most polite way, to be on the front page of the newspaper because that, that means they got to buy ice cream for everybody at the station. But at the same time, they like to do their job and quietly do it in the background. So, I appreciate the recognition.
And you're saying that, and I don't think the public realizes, because we're, I'm looking at this, the, the medical aid that they give, and I don't think the public realizes how involved they are with that issue, you know? They just think it's the ambulance that takes care of it. And you can see that the majority of the fire calls are, it's medical aid.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I know at some point in the past, we had one of the statistics that we had one of the busier fire stations in, I don't know, a, a big area. I don't know if it was the United States or the, or in terms of per capita and, and, but you know what I'm talking about, don't you?
Yes, Station 25, you know, they average about 10 calls a day, as you can see, as well as the medic unit, and, you know, the council member, Brelly's point, you know, the, the medic units and the fire engines, they are, they are quite busy, they do a lot of medical aids. But the other component that is really fortunate for this county is that all of your ambulances are staffed with firefighters. And so, not only are your paramedics and firefighters that are on the ambulances handling those medical calls, but they're also intricately involved with vehicle accidents, you know, rescue calls, swift water, structured fires, you know, they, they're dual functioned. So, not only, you know, the ambulance runs that they do, but also on the fire component, which is a tremendous blessing to this county.
That's huge. A county like Sacramento, they have an ambulance service and a fire, and those two don't, don't mix. And up here, that dual service means that we get a much bigger bang for our buck with every time they roll. It's a, it's a good thing. All right, thank you. All right. Lost my agenda, okay. Any, any questions for Chief, any additional questions for Chief Cordero? All right, seeing none. Upcoming items. Items tentatively scheduled for the next city council meeting or future council, council meetings, because I know somebody's been on for a while, so I don't want to get too carried away here, cause a little heart attack over there. Engineering Fee Schedule Update, fiscal year 2021, and NPDES support, private stewardesses, there's a whole list of these here that, that, that are all on, a lot of them are on Pierre's plate, and I know that he's working diligently towards that, so we're getting extra, a little extra support for him to move through some of these items, and, and so, I appreciate that work.
I think what he told us tonight, all the time that it's taken to do this, you know, latest order, and he just can't get to everything, you know?
And I, I know for certain that, that we've had that discussion at the staff level about the, the amount of effort it's taking and giving him some additional support. And so, Pierre, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing there, and I know that you're, that we put a lot on your plate, so thank you for that. All right. And then, looks like next thing on the agenda is to adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting will be December 14th at 20, 2021, at 4:30 PM, closed session and 5 o'clock regular scheduled meeting.
Before you, just reminder, strategic planning on May, or, excuse me, May, wow, November 29th, in the afternoon.
And we are canceling our next meeting? Did we need to do something about that?
We did that on this agenda tonight.
We already did.
It was on consent.
Oh, I totally missed that.
So, I was going to mention that. So, yes, the actual next meeting, when you'll meet, will be on the 29th for the strategic planning, and then the regular meeting on the 14th.
Excellent, thank you.